Good evening, welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2019. We'll call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Will you all please stand and join me in Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's always really great to hear a nice echo behind us when we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance. A lot of times it's pretty quiet up here, so. That, thanks. We do have a full house tonight, so we're gonna get going. We got a real busy visitor presentation tonight, so we're gonna get moving. Nate, will you call roll, please?
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
And Mayor Winchell. Here. Moves this to item number four. Corrections or additions to the agenda?
I would like to propose moving consent item 7B down to an action item, maybe 8D.
8D?
So I make a motion, I guess, to...
Seven, which one?
Uh, 7B, the adopt ordinance 968 relating to the motorized golf carts.
So I have a motion to move 7B to 8D. Second.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hatfield. Do we need a motion of second to do that?
Yeah, you should to amend it.
Alright. So on the amendment, moving 7B to 7D, is there any discussion? If not...
It'd be 7B to 8D, right?
Yep.
Anyway, yes, 7B to 8D. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same side? Motion carries. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as it stands. When is the change?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to adopt the adopted agenda.
Motion by...
Hubbard.
Councilmember Hubbard. Second. Second by Councilmember Graff to adopt the agenda with the change. Discussion. Hearing, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same side? Motion carries. Moves on to visitor presentation. Again, like I said earlier, we do have a lot. There's one thing I want to start with that wasn't on the agenda, but this past week, we lost one of our former mayors. One of our mayors that started in really the early formative days of what Chaska kinda became what we are today, and Dr. Edgar Ziegler passed away. And I just want to talk a little bit about Doc, as he's been called for. As long as I've known him anyways, he's always been Doc. And reason for, for anybody, there's probably a lot of people that don't really realize who he is anymore, but he was a dentist in our community here for a long time. In talking to his kids, I kinda said to them, "How did you end up in Chaska?" And he, he got out of, he was in the military, he was a military dentist, he was in dental corps from '54 to '56, and then he started a private practice. But he got attached with the University of Minnesota. He loved to teach. I think he loved to teach more than he did his actual practice. But he would, he would do his practice and then go down and teach dental school. And it was, it was really pretty neat, but I was standing there talking to his son, and a student of Doc Ziegler's came up and said, "What a pleasure it was to have Doc as his teacher in dental school." So that just kinda counts volume that this young kid came out to Chaska for that funeral and to search out his son to tell him stuff like that. Really says a lot about what kind of a guy he was. And, but, just a few more things that I wanna, I wanna talk about, but I was going, how does he end up in Chaska? So, again, about the teaching, he taught at the University of Minnesota Dental, I don't know the name of the dental school, but the dental part of the University of Minnesota. And they said, well, they heard about a practice out here in Chaska. And so he came out here and he talked to somebody, and he bought a practice down on Second Street. Luke, you're probably more familiar with this, probably should be sharing this story more than me, but. And so he moved here, got his dental practice going, and I thought it was another interesting thing. He was out washing his windows, and there was another doctor's office, the medical doctor, Dr. Heinzerling, that's been around here for a million years as well. They got together talking that he just moved here and they became best friends and were best friends all through their lives, that were both doctors here in this community. But, so anyways, Dr. Ziegler, he became the mayor in 1968-74. He was a member of the Chaska Chamber of Commerce, charter member, past president of the Rotary of Chaska. He was a Rotary Club George C. Klein Award winner, service above self. He was on a board of directors of Klein, or Klein, First National Bank of Chaska, now Klein Bank, now Old National Bank. He was chairman and founder of Board of Directors of Mayor Lutheran High. He was a delegate to the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod National Convention in Milwaukee in 1971. Let me see here, he's got a long, long list. I'm kinda getting, trying to state his stuff here locally. He's a, he's a board member, '70-'78 of St. John's Lutheran Church, and a member since 1956, past president, and served as an elder. And he was also, he even volunteered at 212 Medical Center in his last few years. Unfortunately, Doc got cancer three years ago, Luke?
Something like that.
Three or four years ago. And his last year, he moved down to be close to his sons that lived in a different part of the country. And then, like I said, I personally, I didn't realize the, how serious his cancer was, that he was taken so quickly. But it, he, so, thank you yourself, and some of you council members probably haven't heard of it either, but he was the mayor that was here in the late 60s when, when a gentleman came to the council by Henry T. McKnight and said, "I want to develop a town within your town, the Jonathan." And to take that type of, I don't even know if you can call it a project, but experiment on, and to do the way he did it, and I believe Matt told me this, that was one of the things he always talked about, is that he so incorporated, he wanted to incorporate Jonathan to be Chaska, and not Jonathan within Chaska like it was kind of said to be. So it was, I mean, that's quite an undertaking for a gentleman to take that on. And Chaska was probably, what, 4,000 population at that time? You know, and now we're approaching 27,000 to 30,000. I don't know what the number exactly is, but it was quite of a thing. And that's why I was talking about, since I've been here, I said, "The foundation's really been laid out for us. The things that happened in the Jonathan, the experimental city within Chaska, but the sewer and water that was brought in made our industrial parks what they are today, that made it so much easier for us to get industrial services here because we had sewer and water, and all of those expensive things were in place already, that help were paid for through this whole project." And then unfortunately, by what, the late 70s is when they started falling into bankruptcy?
'73, '74.
So, but, and I do remember that. I started working for the city in 1974, and I remember the growth was just like going out of this world. It was probably back like it was in the 2007, whenever putting in 400 and 500 houses a year, you know. So it was, he was a great, great man, and he did some phenomenal things for this city, and always so humble. He never, I, we'd see each other often, we'd talk, but he never, ever got into the affairs of what was happening in the current city. What did he always tell you? He said that he would never let?
He always said that he would never, he said, "He was mayor, and he wasn't mayor anymore. He wasn't gonna get involved in current stuff because he would have been hurt if somebody would have done it to him."
So, I mean, it just tells you that he was a very, very humble man and did a phenomenal job for everything in Chaska. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the city council, to his wife Ruth of a ton of years, I don't, I saw it, but I forgot already, and his two sons, Michael and Bob, I want to offer the city of Chaska's condolences to their family, but more of all, to say thank you for everything that he did, not only as a mayor, a dentist in this town, and but just that citizen that everyone wants to be, and that was Doc Ziegler. So, he'll be greatly missed, and I just needed to say those things about Doc tonight, as it's still fresh in my mind. And Luke, I don't know, I know you were a close, close friend. If there's anything you could add?
Well, he is responsible for our firm, still representing the city of Chaska. And you guys are lucky right now. We had a meeting every Monday night, and I bet you there wasn't three or four of them in a year that ended before midnight. It was really a difficult time, and it was a touchy time.
Well, it was a lot. I mean, that's a lot. I can't, can't even imagine all that. And the funding behind it, who was in charge of this, and who was in charge of that, that, like I say, I was not paying any attention to the city council at that time. So I will tell you that I have no idea what kind of things that they had to go through.
Another thing, other than the city of Chaska, his favorite phrase was, he was a really religious person. Go Jesus, go Gophers.
Yeah, that's right. He was a very, very faithful man. And he did, it was, he was so faithful that he wrote his whole service out. He had it all laid out, and the day that he died, they handed it over to the minister, and he said, "We followed it right down, right down the line." So, very good man. But anyways, and I don't know if anyone else has anything or want to say here. So, okay. Alright. Again, I just wanted to make sure that we took that time. So, alright. With that, I have three proclamations to read tonight. The first one tonight is the Direct Support Professional Week. "In recognition of National Direct Support Professional Week, September 8th through the 14th, whereas direct support professionals, DPS, are primarily, primary providers of public-funded, long-term support services for millions of individuals with disabilities, and whereas direct support professionals must build close, respectful, and trusted relationship with individuals with disabilities because they assist them in their most intimate needs. And whereas direct support professionals provide essential support that helps individuals with disabilities stay connected to family, friends, and the community while defining and living their best lives. And whereas direct support professionals provide a broad range of individualized supports, including meal preparation, medication assistance, bathing, dressing, mobility, and other daily tasks. And whereas, an adequate workforce of high-quality direct support professional is necessary for the state to meet the obligations to people with disabilities and minimize more costly settings such as hospitalization or institutional care. And whereas, direct support professionals is one of the fastest-growing positions in America in terms of demand, and yet low wages and demographic trends are creating a growing shortage of direct support professionals, leading to burnout and increased turnover. And whereas, public officials have a key role to play in building awareness around advocating for and addressing the issues facing, sorry, these publicly funded workforce. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Mark Winchell, the mayor of the city of Chaska, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Chaska, do hereby honor and support the work, the important work of DPSs in our community, the week of September 9th through the 15th, 2019, and proclaim DPS Recognition Week in the city of Chaska. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska the 16th day of September in the year of our Lord 2008-19. I got 18, we're gonna have to correct that. So, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask, is there anyone here representing that group tonight? Okay. So we'll get that date corrected, and we'll get that to the, the next one. I don't know, Deb, did you want to come up, or should I just read it here and give it to you, or how do you want to do that?
I welcome you to read the verse, and I'll share a few.
Okay, alright. Alright, the second proclamation is Chaska International Day of Peace, September 21, 2019. Whereas, the United Nations General Assembly established by unanimous vote, the International Day of Peace on September 21st, 1981, stating as follows. Whereas reaffirming that as set forth in the preamble of the Charter of the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, since wars began in mind of men, it is the minds of men that the defense of peace must be constructed, that a peace-based exclusively upon the political and economic arrangements of governments would not, not be a peace which could secure unanimous lasting and serious support of the peoples of the world, and that the peace must therefore be founded, if it is not to fail upon the intellectual and moral solidarity of mankind. And whereas, further recalling that, on the basis of similar considerations, the General Assembly established United Nations University in 1972, and more specifically, the University for Peace in 1980, and entrusted other organs and organizations of the United Nations system with the promotion of peace, mainly through education in all aspects. And whereas, noting with appreciation, the initiative taken by the International Association of the University Presidents at its sixth triennial meeting held in San Jose, Costa Rica in July 1981, to propose the Declaration of Peace Year, a Peace Month, and a Peace Day. And whereas, acknowledging the conclusions of the said meeting, that it would be appropriate to devote a specific time to concentrate the efforts of the United Nations and its member states, as well as the whole of mankind, to promoting the ideas of peace and giving positive evidence of their commitment to peace in all viable ways. Whereas, considering that through the declaration and proper celebration of the International Peace Year and an International Day of Peace, it would be possible to contribute to strengthening such ideas of peace and to alleviating the tensions and causes of conflict, both within and among nations and peoples. Whereas, the 2019 theme for the International Day of Peace draws attention to the importance of combating climate change as a way to promote peace throughout the world. Now therefore it be resolved by the city council of the city of Chaska, Minnesota, this 16th day of September 2019, that the city of Chaska hereby declares 2019, 2019, September 21, excuse me, 2019, as Chaska's Day of Peace, and encourages citizens to engage in activities fostering peace. And I will bring this to you, and if you would just say, you are, please.
Reverend Reginald Clindworth, 3919, Carver Circle, Chaska, Minnesota. I am the senior pastor at Chrona Glory Lutheran Church. Thank you so much. I'm here to greet you on behalf of the 1,263 members of Chrona Glory. We've been a congregation in this community for 51 years. A great number of people come and worship and share and fellowship and livelihood that this community offers each one of our members. This last year of October 2018, we erected a peace pole. We were a congregation that wanted to lift up the voice of peace in this community, and so on our property, we erected that peace pole and dedicated ourselves to being a people of peace. And this year, on the International Day of Peace, we are rededicating it, September 28th and 29th, or showing our faith, our good faith, in the people of this community, and asking the city of Chaska to do the same. That on the 21st of September is the International Day of Peace, and therefore we offer this to you, and give thanks and praise to God for His peace and God's peace in our lives.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, that, your service is there, is that open to general public? Anyone is welcome? That, I don't know if you're putting something out, some way that people have that ability?
If you're all Lutheran, you can come. No, it's open to everybody. It is open. Go Jesus, and God help the Gophers.
Thank you, thank you. Alright. Thanks for sharing those words with us. John, good to see you. Alright, I have one last...
He said he's moving back to Chaska.
No, he can't. He, his, he, he moved out once, he can't come back. Alright, last proclamation is Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2019. Whereas, September 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas, the purpose of the Constitution Week is to promote the study and education about the United States Constitution. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, public law, 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore it be it resolved, the Chaska City Council does hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And again, I didn't ask, is anyone here representing this organization? Okay. Alright, we will get that to the proper officials. Alright, that's, the proclamations are done. We will move on. First one I have on here, Fire Chief Tim Weeby with the Chaska Explorers.
Fire Explorers.
Distinguished. There's two of them.
Excuse me. Chief Weeby and Chaska Fire Explorers. How we doing?
He's looking forward to putting that trophy on him.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, Tim Weeby, Chaska Fire Chief. Here tonight for a couple presentations. First, we'll start with the Chaska Fire Explorers. We have a group of people that have been part of our department and explorer program for almost 20 years. And again, they're kind of like the junior firefighter, firefighter, they have interest in firefighting. They're part of our department, they train with us. I also want to recognize a couple people because the explorers would be there every night if they could, but it takes a group of people to manage that system. That's been one of our bigger challenges. And I'll introduce firefighter Nate Peterson and firefighter Al Tarmen. Not only do they have to do all their duties as a Chaska firefighter, but the explorer program is above and beyond their duty and all the extra time. And I will just turn it over to them to talk about the success they had at the state fair this year. Okay?
Nate, so?
I'm Nate Peterson. I'm the lead advisor for the Explorer posts currently.
Al Tarmen?
An advisor as well. This year, we competed at the state fair at Governor's Fire Prevention Day. There was 24 teams from 19 different posts. We got first place. Last year, we missed second place by seven seconds. So, our goal was to try and get second place this year, and we got first place, the highest score they'd ever seen. So, it's pretty cool.
Awesome.
Did any of you guys want to say anything? I mean, we can lead it, but they're the ones that do it, so.
Well, I think first off, we need to get everyone's names of the explorers.
I'm Emily Frymore, Lieutenant.
I'm Jacob Nelson.
Alex Coe.
I'm Ben Moxey.
I'm Logan Fry, of the Explorers, who were nine years, and then recently became an advisor.
Awesome, awesome. I did get a chance to see some of you at the open house in Congratuity Litch, but that's quite an honor to win that. That's a, I've been to those competitions, I went to a lot of them, and I know that, and as a past firefighter, I know what it takes to do some of those skills. So, and I know it takes a lot of extra work and a lot of extra activities for you guys explorers and your advisors, so I know the amount of work that goes into that. And so, I know that this is quite an honor that you guys have won, and it's something that you can probably carry, and you'll always carry it. You'll always be part of that team that, that won that. And now everyone's got something to shoot for. They gotta beat your score. You know, that's the number one thing. And you know somebody's gonna be shooting for it next year.
Including us.
That's a given, but congratulations. That's quite an honor.
That's really hard work. I was a police explorer, sorry. But I know how hard you guys, I know how hard you guys work, and it's, you know, you always aim for first place, and it, I mean, this shapes you for the rest of your life, so. And you guys, like, our advisors were like our parents, so. Like, they're, you guys do amazing work, so, thank you. That's, congratulations, that's amazing, seriously.
Thank you, thank you.
What else?
I just want to, I just want to...
I don't know, any explorers got anything you want to say? There's 1.2 million viewers out there watching.
You know, I guess I just really want to, like, help clarify how much hard work these guys put into getting first place this year. Just as kind of a reference, the other teams, like you said, there were 19 departments with 24 teams. And so how some of those work is they have enough explorers where each person does just one specific task on one event, or they just split up into like two teams, Team A and Team B. Whereas here, every year, we consistently have like five-ish explorers going to state fair every year, and each event is a four-man team. So each explorer is, you know, well-versed in everything they do. And so they end up putting in multiple hours every week, multiple days, just making sure that we're ready. Just wanted to, you know, really congratulate them for the hard work they put in.
What's for you? You lead us, Paul.
I just wanted to say thank you to our advisors. You know, without them there, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. We wouldn't be able to train, we wouldn't be able to do it right. So I think they don't get enough gratification, so I'd like to thank them for doing that. And also for everybody that came and went to the Minnesota State Governor Fire Prevention Explorer Day, because they all put in hard work, and it really showed towards the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for coming. Thanks for taking another night out.
I'll try to keep this going because I know you have a busy schedule. I also want to bring up firefighter Travis Lindberg and firefighter captain Zach Bonnema. I'm bringing these two forward for a couple different reasons. They're, they're both paid-on-call firefighters.
That means you're supposed to come up.
Yeah. They're both paid-on-call firefighters, but they're also our full-time inspector firefighters during the day. They're both paid-on-call firefighters, but they're also our full-time inspector firefighters during the day. And one of the things they do really good at is getting all their inspection work done and all the other stuff done and doing other things. And the other things I want to talk about is writing some grants. Now we have some staff that were able to write some grants. And we've been successful here in the last twelve months with two pretty big grants. They've both been through Firehouse Subs. The owner of Firehouse Subs is, they're actually, we're firefighters. And they donate a lot of money back to the fire service. The first one was written by Zach. It was for a forcible entry problem. So I'll quickly describe it. I'll turn it over to Zach. It's basically a couple of big steel doors in this frame. And we're able to teach firefighters and Chaska Police Officers how to gain access through doors that are deadbolted, locked, steel doors after we have to go into a commercial building. It teaches the proper techniques to do that. One of the other values is we've allowed other fire departments to come and use it. So the firefighters from Meadow Locken Fire at Mystic Lake, they've came multiple days and trained on it. Carver fires come and trained on it. So it's not only just for Chaska, we've used other agencies have been able to come to our station and utilize that problem. I know forcible entry is a very, it's one of Zach's passions, and I'll just let him talk about it for a second.
While Zach's coming up, I know, like, if you're letting Med Fire, they've done so much for our community. And what a great way to pay it forward to that group, you know, with something like that that they didn't have access to. So that's a, another great way to utilize that. So Zach, go ahead.
So the picture is actually sitting on my desk right now. I couldn't bring it with. It's almost two thousand pounds. But basically what Chief said, it's a big metal door. We can train on inward, outward, left, right-hand swinging doors. We can train on padlocks. Forcible entry is one of those skills that you do in Fire One, you might never do it again. So now we get more repetitive in it, or people are actually a lot more comfortable doing it. But the biggest thing it brings us to be able to work with our mutual aid partners a lot more because they're over at our station. So we're seeing their trucks, seeing how they do things. So I think it's good for us and our community and our whole district that we work in.
Thanks, Zach. The thing Zach didn't say was it's an eight-thousand-dollar prop that we receive basically for free. The second one was written by Travis Lindberg. And Travis, it was for multiple agencies. This was for not only Chaska Fire, but also for Chaska Police. We were able, and we were successful through the same company, Firehouse Subs. And we were able to get nineteen new AED devices. They're state-of-the-art, brand-new. And to me, one of the values is trying to standardizing Chaska Police and Chaska Fire. So now, Chaska Police and Fire all carry the exact same AED. And that was not the case prior to this. We had different brands. They function a little differently. But now we're able to have the exact same one. So when we're responding, it doesn't matter if police pull theirs in first or ours, we're using the exact same equipment. So I'll let Travis talk for a few minutes about that.
Yeah, so previously, we had fourteen AEDs amongst the two departments. Now we have nineteen total. So it's five additional AEDs for our public service agencies. They varied in age and model, but as Chief said, now they're the same standardized model. And they're really the top-of-line equipment. Previously, we've had to carry two sets of pads for adult pediatric patients. These AEDs only need one set of pads, so it's a lower-cost savings. Basically, what they do is they weigh the patient as they sense the cardiac rhythm, which then determines how much energy to give that patient when it shocks it. Another cool feature of these AEDs is that you're able to hook up via USB to the paramedics' MDTs, their laptops, for their charts. So a good continuity of care, you can see how many shocks are given, at what time, at what energy rating. Previously, something that we weren't able to do. So other things, cool things that we're able to offer with these AEDs. So Firehouse Subs gave us nineteen of these to the tune of twenty-three thousand dollars. We just took delivery of these here...
Early, early August?
Early August, late July. So, and they hit the streets right away. There's nine of them with Chaska Police and ten of them with Chaska Fire. So currently, they haven't been on a patient yet, but we have them, so we're ready.
Preparation.
Amen.
Just to, I asked Lieutenant Chris George to step up. The other thing we did as part of the same process was also trying to standardize our medical supplies. Not only are we standardizing now our AEDs, but we've created medical bags for Chaska Fire and Chaska Police. Police are blue, fires red. Because it can't have the same color, because we would argue whose bag it was. But again, in these bags now, it's the exact same equipment. So if they pull up first or we pull up first, it doesn't matter anymore. We have the same equipment. We're familiar with the bags. We're able to deliver a much quicker, much more effective customer service to our people in Chaska. So Lieutenant, I don't know if you want to say anything or...
I'll keep it short and sweet because our, our input from the Police Department was very minimal. We went to the experts on this. And Travis and then DJ Kraus and Zach and Chief Weeby, they know this stuff. It's their passion. They really have a great deal of interest in Chaska Fire, Chaska Police, and the citizens of Chaska. And they did all the legwork and we all benefit from it at the Police Department and as citizens of the City of Chaska. What's great for us and our officers is we can take these, these bags, get them dirty. We open them up, take stuff out of them, use them on a scene. We can bring them right back to the Fire Department. And Travis and the Chaska Fire crew puts them right back together. They tag them and we know that they're good to go, so... I think it just speaks volumes to the cooperation and collaboration between our departments.
Awesome. I think that that is... This Firehouse Subs has just got to be amazing. And I know we're trying to get them here somewhere.
Yeah, so unless they're...
But do they, I mean, are...
Come on, Nate.
Are we...
Nate's the only one not doing his job.
Kind of a thank you from the Council at a city level? I don't know, or if you're comfortable with how you guys have handled it. But we'd be more than willing if you need something like that from...
We did a press release and all that had to go through Firehouse Subs for approval, so we did all that. So I think they're, they're very happy.
Good, all right. Because I, like I say, that's a heck of a donation. I mean, just two of them, you're talking, you're in the thirty-thousand-dollar range.
I think the other unique piece is the rep that reps the AEDs lives in Chaska.
Yep. Annie?
So we were able to bring this all together and make it work. I would tell you that it was a challenge. I think Travis wrote the grant three times over the last few years. So it was not just, it took a while to get the right things in place to make this all happen. Knowing the right people sometimes helps.
Sounds like you've created a nice friendly competition between Travis and Zach, who can get the biggest grant?
So...
Not that, not that I'm putting out the challenge or anything, but nothing.
The AEDs were a more expensive grant, but it only took Zach one try to get his.
Travis, thank you for your persistence and dedication. Everybody benefits because of that, so...
Thank you. Thank you to both you guys. Excellent work.
Thanks, everybody. And I, there's a whole herd of fire guys and ladies in the back. Thank you all for your service again, and thanks for being here tonight. You guys got to run off the training?
Unless you want us to stay.
What's, what's your last poison?
I'm over the training.
Can I come? Well, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it again. See ya. Thanks. Have a good night. All right. So we are at five F. Eastern Carver County School Referendum. Aim, I have. She's not here, so I'll skip that.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some information with you. I'm Clint Christopher Superintendent. With me tonight is Amy Ledoux, our Assistant Superintendent. Also joining us tonight are Fred Berg and Jenny Stone with our school board. I know we don't have a lot of time, so we do have some informational items for you to share with you. And we have a quick video, and then we'll answer any questions that we can for you. So I'll just direct your attention to this two-sided sheet of paper here and kind of talk through.
Is your video loaded already?
It is supposed to be ready to go, so as soon as I, I'll click play. And I think he had it working before we started here. So November fifth is our referendum on the ballot. There are three questions. As you can see, question one is an operating levy, maintaining our strong academic programs for our students and maintaining our class sizes and helping to manage growing enrollment. Question two is the bond question. That's the building question. That's for a new elementary here in Chaska. Again, based on the growth in the community. It addresses some of our deferred maintenance needs across the district. And it's also for a larger bus garage. And then question three is a renewal of a safety and technology levy that was originally approved in two thousand thirteen. That was a six-year levy, and we're out to renew that as well. So those are the three questions. Just some information on this after, you know, we'll get into the video, some more details. But on the back, some voting information, just so you know, the polling locations are a little bit different. There is just one in each of our communities, and you can see those identified there. Also to remind you that absentee ballots are available upon request from the district. We can support you with that. And also, early voting begins September twentieth, so there's some information related to that. And with that, we'll, hopefully we'll get this video to load here, and then we'll stick around and answer any questions for you. It's good to have some tech support. We appreciate that.
Let's try this again here.
See, usually we don't have volume. We got volume.
Okay, how about this? We'll just go fresh.
That's what I was thinking.
Player, yeah, see, red one.
That's what we thought.
There you go, guys.
I have no idea what he's talking about. Oh, Matt's helping. You never know. Mayor, could you tell them what to do? I would hit fresh.
And the great facilities that are out there.
It's really about honoring each individual student and their experiences and what they bring, and then supporting them to the end of it. It's high achievement through that personal life.
I love being able to ask the boys day-to-day how their day was because I know ninety-nine percent of the time, it's coming back to good feedback. And it's because of where they are, the people they surround themselves with, the way they're treated by the faculty and staff. It's very easy for us to sleep at night knowing that every day we're sending them to a very good place.
Families seek out the high-quality education we provide. It continues to move here into new and existing homes. A recent demographic study projected that fourteen-hundred more students would enroll in the Eastern Carver County Schools in the next five years, with most of them at the elementary level.
When you break that down, that's about one classroom per month. We're seeing a lot of young families coming in, and they want to make sure that they have a great opportunity for their children to learn, to grow, and to be successful.
A November fifth Eastern Carver County School District residents will be asked to vote on three school funding requests. These requests would address academic needs, budget pressures, growing enrollment, aging buildings, school security, and technology. Question one is for an operating levy increase to continue the strong academic preparation of our students, prevent cuts to programs and services, maintain class sizes, and manage growing enrollment.
It's really important to me to have one-on-one type of students or even small groups with students just so I can get to know them, know what motivates them, what they need, and then they don't get lost in the shuffle of the rest of your students.
Every teacher that I've had in this district has been willing to take the time out of their already so busy day to talk to me about things that are about me learning and growing as a student and as an individual.
What we're doing for our students has been recognized across the country and across the globe in some respects. But that takes investment, that takes commitment, that takes training and tools, and those are things we need to support.
Question two is for bond funds to build a new elementary school, address deferred maintenance across the district, and build a larger bus garage.
So the Facility Task Force did look at both adding on to three schools versus a new building. Adding on to the three schools is more expensive than it is to build a new school. Over the last nine years, we have spent about twenty million dollars in deferred maintenance, and we have been maintaining our schools. We're just at a point with some of our older buildings that they have such great needs to do the major infrastructure, whether it's HVAC or its ventilation system. All of that requiring a lot more dollars to make that work for that particular school.
As we look at the bus facility, it was really originally designed for fifty buses. And we have over a hundred, and we'll continue to grow. The physical building itself has one mechanic's bay. So as our fleet's gotten larger, there's just not the physical space we need for those to maintain and operate them effectively.
Question three is a no-tax increase renewal of an existing levy for security and technology.
Investing in security is an important aspect for the district. It's more important for our students. It's really about providing a safe and secure environment that students can come into, feel safe and secure, and be able to sit down and learn.
If voters approve all three questions, the tax impact on the average homeowner would be about thirty-six dollars per month.
We want to ensure that we're protecting our investment for the long haul. And the environment that we create for our students is just as positive today as, you know, ten years from now. What we are asking for is really only what we need to be a district of choice and be a district that everyone can be proud to send a turd.
To learn more about the requests, please visit the district website. And remember to vote on November fifth.
And with that, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone? I've been, I've been through this and had an opportunity to meet. So feel free to, if you've got any questions or if you're good.
One thing I will bring up is in past referendums, the council has provided a resolution of support in favor of it. If that's something that this council wants to do, we could bring something back at the September thirtieth meeting as a proposal resolution to do that. So that's something if you wanted to discuss it, we certainly could prepare and bring back.
And I want to be clear, I was here the last time we did that. It's not necessarily, we're looking for anyone to say, yeah, I'm voting for it, I'm not voting for it. This is about how the city feels about a referendum. Because good schools make good cities, good cities make good schools. So it's more of that, and it's not really saying, yes, you're voting for it, or no, you're not voting for it. It's about, we as a community, how do we feel about some of these things that are being proposed? So when we talk about this letter of, of support, it would be a support from the city council, not individually how you feel. So I want to be clear that we don't feel that you're, anyone's pinned one way or another on your thoughts. But, and like I said, we did that the last referendum on Carver Elementary. And I don't remember, I think it was just the operating stuff, but we did a letter of support at that time from the city council. And that's what Matt is referencing there, so...
I would just comment that...
The information's good.
I think it's good to get information out. I mean, the numbers are crazy. I actually live, he featured my neighborhood there, Founder's Ridge. And seriously, like, the kids get on that elementary bus, we basically fill that bus in that neighborhood. There's one stop in the neighborhood, and there's probably thirty elementary kids that get on that. You know, but then you start playing numbers of the growth, and you see the houses, but you realize how many families come with all these houses. So I just appreciate well-put-together video, good information. You know, I think it's a good conversation prior to our work session here because it's another one of those line items on that, that thing that comes in the mail for everyone, right? So I think it's, it's important to understand kind of what, what you're getting and what you're signing up for and encouraging people to vote, because it is, you know, kind of an off-cycle election, and people forget about, you know, that kind of piece. These votes matter sometimes more than some of those other important elections as well because it impacts our children, our kids, and good cities and good communities.
I'll add one, something else too, that it's one of the things that's really key about this is that, you know, that a lot of people who vote aren't necessarily parents, right, and don't have children. And, but anyone who's a homeowner or values...
I think as a city, it's nice to see that the elementary will be in Chaska. I was personally shipped out to East Union, which is a nice school, but for a five-year-old to get on a bus to go from downtown Chaska to East Union is a long ride, so that was also 25 years ago, but it is nice to see an additional, that that would be an additional in Chaska.
Where is the proposed larger bus garage going to be built?
So we have an agreement with a property in Chaska, it's off Norx Drive, that was originally built for buses. That, that agreement is contingent on the referendum passing. And we were really fortunate to find that property because it's very difficult to find a centrally-located property that would do that for us. So again, it's just north of, so that would be Lyman Boulevard, that where that facility is located.
And with the, what's the capacity of buses that would be in a larger garage?
Yeah, we believe, we will have all of our buses within that facility.
But then in future years, what are we, like, is it that you're just building a garage to maintain the number of buses that, you know, the current one was built for 50, now you're at 100, is this one built for 100 and now?
There's also space within that site where we could do additional space there if we needed to. One of the things that, that the school district is looking at too is actually operating their own bus service. You know, right now they contract with student, first student, and...
Positive connections.
Student transportation. Student transportation, America or something, but one of the things that really becomes important is if you own your own fleet, to be able to have a place to keep them, to be able to maintain them. The cost savings that the school district is looking at by actually operating their own system as opposed to contracting out, it's pretty significant, and so having the right facility to be able to do that is a pretty important part of that.
Quick question.
Sure.
So, you know, I think, you know, investment's really important to maintain the quality of education, but worst-case scenario, if none of these passed, what would the net impacts be to the students, you know, and to the education that we receive?
So, you know, one of the things we'll share with you, you know, again, part of the need for that operating dollars, 70% of our funds come from the state, and over the course of the last 15 years, the state dollars to school districts hasn't kept pace with inflation, right? So that gap has continued to grow. To put that into perspective, just last year, that gap was $600 per student. Over 10,000 students, that's $6 million just last year. We've continued to tighten our belt, cost containment, $10 million over the last 10 years, $3.5 million over the last three, doing everything we can to keep that out of the classroom. And again, the classroom is where we spend a majority of our, our funds, so difficult to do. So as we roll forward, we know we're at a point now where if this doesn't pass, we can't keep it out of the classroom. So we're looking at $4.5 million in cuts, which would be close to 50 staff members across the district, increasing class size. And if you also don't pass the bond component and we continue to grow, so for instance, Carver Elementary has no additional classrooms to grow, right? So, you know, at that point, you start putting more kids within the existing classrooms, your class size expands there. Or you start repurposing, so we've got great opportunities for our kids. Our, our buildings, our elementary buildings have STEM labs, right, where kids can do programming and coding and work with robotics, all really important 21st century skills. Those programs go away because we need that physical space for something else, so there's kind of a compounding factor there in terms of what happens if it doesn't pass. I think an important point that you pointed out though is that you can fill a bus in your neighborhood. If you look at the southwest Chaska area, there's 2,500 homes, there's enough growth that's going to occur within that neighborhood that could really fill that school itself. And so, especially with the interchange popping up there and growth, you know, we looked at the numbers tonight, the building, residential building permits are still growing pretty significantly, and the pace will just increase as transportation becomes easier to get there. So this is one that it's sort, it's almost like a Carver Elementary where you build it and you filled up pretty quick.
And, and Carver Elementary is like capacity now, or close to it?
It's, the, the capacity of that building is 720 and they are at 700 students.
By a crow fly, they're not very far apart, so...
Correct.
And a lot of the kids that are probably in that area now, our area, are at Carver as well, so...
You know, another thing, we had a facility committee that looked at, you know, all of these, their enrollment and the growth and the capacities of each of the buildings. They looked at, you know, different-sized elementaries, they also looked at additions. It would be additions on three different elementary buildings existing, and the cost of the additions was actually more than doing the elementary. So really, as they looked at that, we know we're going to continue to grow, we have the need for that elementary building, and from a cost perspective, it's more cost-effective and less disruption to the school environment for those three buildings that would be impacted by that.
I think it is interesting because you, I've heard that kind of like, well, this land with this elementary school could be as really close to where Carver Elementary is, but it's just like, just drive that, because everywhere you look, there's housing development signs everywhere, right? So it's like, you can understand how, yeah, they might be physically, you know, kind of close to each other, you might, a clear day, you may maybe see each other, but the houses in Carver and in southwest Chaska, they're just keep, keep going up, so...
I forget what Brent mentioned.
Didn't they say 800?
They had 800 new lots platted out in Carver after the elementary school went up.
I have one question on the question three, the levy renewal supports school security and technology. So I've been really impressed when I go into the schools, I, I feel very secure going in and knowing I can't get in until they let me in and they, I'm wearing a badge with my picture on it and everything. So to continue doing, obviously, some costs was put in that to, to put it there, what does it look like in the future to continue just making sure our schools are secure?
And a lot of that's just maintaining that. And I like to remind people, there's over 750 cameras throughout the district and as those fail, they have to be replaced, right? It's the software, all those systems behind it, so, you know, again, the initial investment was in that physical space, but now it's in the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of that.
Thank you.
With Carver, I didn't get a chance to ask this when we met the other day. With Carver Elementary fairly new, can you just take that plan and build another one without having to go through architectural fees and all that? I mean, I think it's a successful building from what I've heard, and I've been in it a couple of times, it looks like a pretty nice setup, but I don't know.
You're going to incur the architectural fees one way or the other, even if you're just kind of renewing that same design? But I think it's also important that you have community input on that process. They won't let you get it for free, twice.
Well, no, but you don't have to go through the whole design process.
But there's a lot of great features within that building. And again, I, I think in doing the right process, you bring in stakeholders from across the community to have that conversation, we did that at Carver, and so they had the opportunity to say, you know, "Here's what we value in a building and, and how we want it designed," knowing that there are some features in our existing buildings across the district that, that we really want and want to maintain. And then there's more sense of ownership in that building, so... I think it's important to also point out that, you know, we have our 55 acres of community park that are adjacent to that school site, and if we're going to be ready for building of that school, we as a city need to start planning that park. And so Marshall's gone through the process now of really starting to sort of think about what that process would be, how do we make sure we have the community involved in it, how do we make sure that we're sharing facilities with the schools so we're not duplicating efforts on things that we don't have to, and really trying to make that a collaborative process too. And again, I think that brings ownership out to that, that site.
Just to comment on your point about capacity, I'll, I'll share a personal story, right? I mean, it's, it's at capacity and it does impact, you know, I don't think negatively, but it has impact. My son's a first grader, he's in, he's in a family that's got second and third graders because there's not enough rooms by where all the kindergartners went, you know, in that family. So he, he doesn't notice, he's fine and happy, but that's, the intent was kind of keeping these family pods together, and that's been impacted because you got, you got too much demand and you got to find more room, newer space. So, you know, not a negative effect, but it is already in the, the size of those classes and the demand is impacting students already.
One piece I would just also like to highlight quickly is, again, in the questions, question one has to pass, so the operating question has to pass in order for question two, the bond question to pass. And part of the reason it's set up that way is we have in the past, in this community, we've, we've passed the bond to build a facility and not the operating dollars to run it. And so it was important for us to make sure that they, they both went together. So I think there was a year where Chaska High School opened and the old high school, which is Middle School West, was closed for a year and then they transitioned kids, and so trying to avoid that, we, those, those two questions are, are linked together.
I know for a fact that some private schools in the Twin Cities are like $30,000 a year for a sixth grader. What does it cost per student here, five, $6,000?
For a student to attend?
No, the cost to educate.
Yeah, our per, I, I cannot give you a specific number on our per-pupil expenditure. I can follow up.
But I thought, when our kids went to school, I thought it was like $5,000 here. And so we got 36 years of education, which means we got $180,000 to pay back to the school. My wife and I'd have to live for another 100 years to pay the school back.
Would you be city attorney all 100 years?
I'll try, I have a job to take. Because it seems to me a great deal.
Yes.
All right, anyone else have any questions for...
Is this something the council would like us to bring back, a resolution to consider?
Nope. To consider.
Yeah.
So, so what he'll do is we'll drop, draft up a letter and then we'll have the opportunity to look at it and see it and pass it as part of, whether it's consent or it's an item or whatever, we look at it.
Okay. Last thing I'll mention too, just on this second sheet of paper, a webinar that we have coming up, informational webinar, that can, people can register and, and see that online anywhere, and then also an in-person session, again, presenting the information and, and answering questions that, that people may have. So again, thank you very much for your time tonight, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right, is there anyone else here under visitor presentation? I can't believe that there was any, but I think we covered just about everybody, so... All right, with that, we will go ahead and move on to item six, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
By Councilmember Hatfield to approve previous meeting minutes discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves on to action items. It is adopt resolution 2019-99 approving preliminary plat and conditional use permit for Shepherd of the Hill townhomes.
Mayor, Councilmember, that I'm in front of you tonight, is coming out of the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval of the preliminary plat in the CUP. This is the property at the southeast corner of County Road 10 and Highway 41 and is the additional property that Shepherd of the Hill Church owns that's just to the southeast of, of their building. This was, we did see a concept plan for this come back several months ago, which was approved along with a number of conditions for them to consider, and Liz is here to, to talk about how the plans have been updated since that point and where we're at.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. We have the preliminary plat and conditional use permit request tonight for the Shepherd of the Hill Twin Homes. So as Matt mentioned, the site is in the southeast quadrant of Highway 41 and Angler Boulevard, as shown on this exhibit in blue here. So the area that we're looking at is purely the open green space area of the Shepherd of the Hill property to be developed for that twin home development. So Habitat for Humanity is the applicant behind this proposal and they are a national nonprofit organization that specializes in providing everyone a decent place to live. So they did come forward in June of this year for their concept plan and there were a number of concerns or items that were brought up during that first initial phase for the applicant to work on for their preliminary submittal, and those had to do with the architecture of the homes, the overall traffic that's generated out of this proposal, drainage that is occurring currently, but also that will be proposed with this proposal, and then lastly, headlight glare into a specific property that lines up with the cul-de-sac entrance. So I will kind of go through these different topics throughout this presentation and how they've addressed it in the second time around. But specifically what they're asking for tonight, again, is that preliminary plat approval and conditional use permit approval for the construction of four twin homes, which would result in eight total dwelling units. The property is currently zoned R1, which is a low-density residential zoning district, and twin homes are allowed within this district with a conditional use permit, so that is why they're requesting approval of that tonight with this request. The exhibit on this screen is the proposed layout and site plan for the four twin homes. In total, this is approximately two acres of site acreage that the proposal is taking up. Crest Drive here is right on the eastern side where the development will be gaining access off of, and this will basically result in a cul-de-sac that will provide access to all four twin homes. Each twin home will have a driveway gaining access to the property.
Commission with a recommendation for approval of the preliminary plat and the CUP. This is the property at the southeast corner of County Road ten and Highway forty-one and is the additional property that Shepherd of the Hill Church owns, uh, that's just to the southeast of, of their building. This was, we did see a concept plan for this come back several months ago, uh, which was approved along with a number of conditions for them to consider. And Liz is here to, to talk about how the plans have been updated since that point and where we're at.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. We have the preliminary plat and conditional use permit request tonight for the Shepherd of the Hill Twin Homes. So, as Matt mentioned, uh, the site is in the southeast quadrant of Highway forty-one and Angler Boulevard, um, as shown on this exhibit in, uh, blue here. So, the area that we're looking at is purely the open green space area of the Shepherd of the Hill property, uh, to be developed for that twin home development. So, Habitat for Humanity is the applicant behind this proposal and they are a national nonprofit organization that specializes in providing, uh, everyone a decent place to live. So, they did come forward in June of this year for their concept plan and there were a, a number of, uh, concerns or, uh, items that were brought up during that first initial phase for the applicant to work on for their preliminary submittal. Um, and those had to do with the architecture of the homes, uh, the overall traffic that's generated out of this proposal, uh, drainage that is occurring, uh, currently, uh, but also that will be proposed, uh, with this proposal. And then lastly, headlight glare into, uh, specific property that lines up with the cul-de-sac entrance. So, I will kinda go through these different topics throughout this presentation and how they've addressed it, uh, in the second time around. But specifically what they're asking for tonight, again, is that preliminary plat approval and conditional use permit approval for the construction of four twin homes, which would result in eight total dwelling units. The property is currently zoned R1, which is a low-density residential zoning district, and twin homes are allowed within this district with a conditional use permit. So, that is why they're requesting approval of that tonight with this request. The exhibit on this screen is the proposed layout, uh, and site plan for the four twin homes. In total, this is approximately two acres of site acreage, uh, that, uh, the proposal is taking up. Crest Drive here is right on the eastern side where the, uh, development will be gaining access off of. And this will basically result in a cul-de-sac that will provide access to all four twin homes. Each twin home will have a driveway, uh, gaining access to the property. Each unit will also have a two-car garage. And then, all the lots and the right-of-way widths are consistent with city standards. So, in order to have a twin home development, you do have to meet a certain, uh, level of minimum standards, uh, in terms of the lot size and setbacks and so forth, which they do, uh, as a part of this request. Uh, so, the two different units, so they're proposing two different units as a part of this proposal. And on the north side, um, it's what they consider their two-story above grade, grade units. Basically, these will be slab-on-grade, uh, units, um, that will be two stories above grade as you're looking at them from the cul-de-sac side. If you were coming down Crest Drive from Angler, uh, looking southerly, you'll only see one grade above, uh, or one story above grade, um, from the backside. And that's consistent with all the units. So, given the topography that's going on with that site, um, that's why the northerly units look like two-story above grade units from the cul-de-sac, but only one story above grade, um, as you're coming down Crest Drive. And then, the other units on the south side are these one-story above grade units that you'll see from the cul-de-sac and that will kinda carry through, uh, through the backside as well. And these will have basements as part of that because of the, again, with the grade differences that are occurring from the north and the south sides. And then, a couple elevation drawings of each of these units. The first one, again, are the northerly units, the two-story above grade units. The comment that was brought up during the concept plan is, um, mainly the concern with the backside of these units. They were completely, um, flat, uh, no articulation on the backsides. And this time around, they have, um, provided a little bit more articulation with a bump out on the backside, um, to show a, a little bit more, um, volume amassing on that side. All these units will be constructed of LP smart side, um, as well as provide, uh, four-inch window trim around all the windows. And as you can see, all the units will have windows on all four sides, so there won't be any, uh, blank spaces, um, on these dwellings. And another thing to note, with the two-story unit, they will be utilizing, um, I believe, a six-inch band board to kinda dissect the, the first story from the second story to, again, just provide a little bit more articulation on that facade, which will wrap around the entire unit. And then, uh, the southerly units, which are the one-story above grade units, uh, will basically apply the same material application, uh, to those units as well. The backside will be, uh, the similar, uh, or the same, uh, with the northerly units. And again, uh, provide that bump-out articulation in the back, so it doesn't create a long, uh, array of just, um, lap siding there. So, the Planning Commission was happy with, uh, those changes that were made and, uh, as staff as well, um, we're happy to see more articulation being brought out on those facades. And then, this is just a rendering that's pulled from the concept plan, but is still very much, uh, true to kinda how you see the overall cul-de-sac and the layout, uh, from Crest Drive. Um, in terms of the drainage, uh, so, the applicant did put together a stormwater, uh, plan as a part of their preliminary request. So, currently, the way the land kinda lays out today as it slopes southerly, uh, a lot of the drainage basically goes southerly down that sloping hill, um, until it reaches, uh, the storm drain at Scenic View Drive, which is just, uh, south, um, of this development at that intersection, um, with Scenic View Drive and Crest Drive. So, there were a lot of concerns with the southerly neighbors that butt up against this development and the amount of water, uh, that they get into their backyards because of the current, uh, topography and nothing's really stopping it at this point. So, with this proposal, it will obviously help better the drainage situation out there based on the, uh, calculations that they've been able to do. So, currently, about one-point-eight acres of overland drainage drains into those southerly properties and it will be, uh, bettered to zero-point-five acres of, um, drainage into those, uh, properties. So, uh, it definitely decreases the amount of overland drainage into those properties with the inclusion of the cul-de-sac and collecting water, um, within, uh, that infrastructure there. Since it doesn't collect everything, uh, we have indicated a couple other options that could be explored, uh, to further, uh, better the situation, um, for the developer to look into. And those two options were either to, uh, provide a berm on the south side here, uh, to really collect, uh, that, all that overland drainage and redirect it to Crest Drive, um, or extend the storm sewer, uh, system into the cul-de-sac, um, to collect, uh, basically all the drainage that is occurring there, uh, and then into Crest Drive. Cause currently, everything collects at that intersection of Crest Drive and Scenic View Drive, um, so with the extension of the, uh, storm sewer system, it would help collect, uh, everything that's happening just north of those, uh, southerly properties that are getting hit pretty hard. So, that is something that I know the developers, uh, at this moment, uh, working on and will definitely have, um, some information to address, uh, by final submittal in terms of how, uh, to overly, uh, overall, uh, address the, the drainage concern out there. But, in a positive light, uh, the development that is proposed is gonna help better the situation out there. And then, with traffic, it was, uh, requested during the concept plan that the developer do a traffic report with their preliminary submittals. So, they did complete that, um, and submit it as, uh, a supplement, uh, for this secondary, uh, or second phase submittal. Basically, that report concluded that with the addition of eight dwelling units. Fifty, fifty-six trips, uh, a day are gonna be added to Crest Drive as a result of that. So, that's seven trips per dwelling unit. So, adding that on to the current volume that exists there, that'll be a five-point-six percent added volume increase as a result of those eight dwelling units. Um, and in conclusion, uh, due to the, uh, kinda minor, uh, volume addition to that area, it does not change or negatively impact the level of service that occurs on Crest Drive. And then, lastly, um, there was a concern with headlight glare specifically to the property at fifteen sixty-one Crest Drive, which basically lines up with the entrance of the cul-de-sac and the neighborhood. And there was concerns with cars basically pulling out of, uh, this proposed development and how it may or may not shine light onto that, uh, proposed property. Uh, the developer did engage in conversation with that property owner, uh, shortly after the concept plan, um, and, uh, during their submittal of this preliminary, um, to help try to alleviate any concerns or provide any options to them to mitigate, uh, the concern there. So, a couple options were, um, provided to them in the form of blinds, landscaping in the front of that lot, uh, or moving the cul-de-sac entrance about five feet northerly or even southerly to kinda line up more so with their driveway or be out of, uh, line with kinda the bedroom windows, um, of their property. The property owner, uh, hasn't really committed to any of those options quite yet. So, they are, um, still kind of in that dialogue of what seems to be the best approach. I know they've, um, have engaged a landscaper to, um, uh, get an expert, uh, opinion on, uh, the screening mechanisms, if any. So, I know they're, they're still, uh, in the midst of conversation and figuring out what the best option would be. If anything, he's been very, um, happy with the way the developer has been engaging with him and trying to, uh, help the, uh, issue. Um, and hopefully, we will have a final determination and answer by the time we come back for final.
This whole thing is between the developer and the homeowner.
Right now.
We're out of it.
Right.
No, it's gonna stay right there, right? Cause we're gonna hear about it. That's between the developer and that homeowner, that they gotta get something. I won't, I won't vote in favor until that's done.
Well, I think that's the key of where we're involved, is that, and I think that's why.
Cause then it's gonna turn around and come back to be our problem and it's built.
Have you gotten to it? It would, I, when I correctly went and stood there, um, and like, so I know the, the, how long is the driveway, like sixty-three feet or something?
Yeah, it's gonna be sixty or so.
And it, it's, I feel like it's gonna go down enough that it, the impact is minimized. So, to help give, uh, understanding, there's a house I spend a lot of time at, cause I work at it, that there is a cul-de-sac exactly like this is set up across from it. And the room I sleep in, the headlights come directly into it. So, they're actually coming up often and it, and I've never had a problem sleeping with it. So, like, for me, I think those options are good options. And, like, when I went and stood there, I felt like it went down, the property goes down enough that it, the impact is not as much as it may seem. And I really, like, sat there for a while, like I said, like, and thought about it and then I went and stood, like, you have to, like, you have to walk up a hill, basically, onto that property, which I thought was interesting. So, have you ever just seen me walking around weird places?
Appreciate that, getting into the.
I'm going by the aerial and that's pretty, they're pretty precise.
I just, that was what was surprising me, was how much of a, cause I really thought it was like less. And then, you actually like go to it and it is more, and like I said, the, the, four nights a month, I sleep in a room where that's, the impact is there's literally a cul-de-sac right across from the big picture windows that I sleep in front of. And we have curtains and it's fine. And quite frankly, at night, I don't wanna be in front of those picture windows without curtains, cause everybody can see you and it's just weird. But I mean.
Just like people staring at a picture window.
I think the, the key thing is that when you look at the, the, the grade, the final grading plan, it's actually showing that the, the grading's actually gonna be going down at like a downhill into that, that home, yeah.
So, you think about headlights, you like.
It'll be like about one foot for every, was it, ten, like, ten or fifteen feet out, right?
You're getting pretty analyzing.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying. We're all just saying.
I'm just saying, those two working out, that's mine.
I mean, I agree, I think it's been good, I'm just.
That, yeah.
Offering perspective.
Cause I, I, I think the examples they gave are lame. Any street I can go and say there's headlight glare. So, uh, this is new, that's different. It's a whole new world when you do it new. All of that stuff was existing and that's, that's all I'm saying, this is that. And I hope there's not a problem, believe me, but I, I, I just wanted to be clear that laws are working on it, keep us out of it. Well, it's just very time-consuming and it's all personal. It's all personal, how you feel on it. And it, you, you just, once it's there, uh, you get a result. So, get it done now and then we move on.
Yep, so we'll continue to encourage that as they keep moving forward.
Do they have a name for this cul-de-sac already? Is that the name?
Yeah, that's the name.
What is it called? How do you say it?
Niskanen? Niskanen Circle.
Does it mean something? You are?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Chad Dipman. I'm a project manager at Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, Mr. Niskanen was a member of the church who was actively involved in Habitat over his lifetime and the church requested that name.
I was just, cause it doesn't really fit any of our names.
It's nice not to have a tree name for a street name though. For once. So, the only other thing I wanted to touch on was the conditional use permit side of things. And I'm not gonna get into too much detail, uh, since I, uh, provided the analysis and the report, but it, uh, there's six criteria that needs to be met for a conditional use permit, uh, to, um, be approved and it has nothing to do with making sure that the use itself is not gonna be detrimental, uh, to the overall area, um, that it won't be interest to the use and enjoyment of the area, um, won't impede on the normal and orderly development of the area, making sure that there's adequate utilities and access, uh, and streets, uh, put in place as a result of this, um, making sure that traffic isn't gonna be an issue and that, in all other respects, it conforms to the district that it's going into. Uh, so, in conclusion, uh, we did note that, uh, the request being made tonight, uh, is consistent with that criteria, um, and therefore, um, should be, uh, allowed to have the, uh, approval on the conditional use permit. So, with that, um, we are asking to make a motion tonight to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash ninety-nine, which is approving the preliminary plat and conditional use permit, uh, for the Shepherd of the Hill, uh, Twin Homes based on those conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Start?
Yes. Yep.
If my memory serves me right, that we didn't talk about here is that the land will be owned by a land trust and individuals would purchase the house. And so, that's making that more affordable, cause land's expensive.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure, cause I, it wasn't specifically, we didn't talk about it specifically and I wanted to make sure I was remembering it correctly, so.
Yep.
Anyone else, questions?
I do like the, the back. I mean, that was my, I think I, I talked about that, cause it has so much exposure to really make sure, and I think landscaping will be key back there too.
Mm-hmm, yep, and they will include that as well.
There's no way, you're never gonna hide that back, cause it has so much exposure. I mean, it's outside. So, it was good to see that they were willing to work with that.
I assume it's giving you more insight, if there's a bump out.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it, but I assume that with the final, we'll see the, uh, landscape plan, cause I didn't see it in here.
It, it was in here and actually, I did include it as an exhibit in this report, didn't wanna get too far in, into the weeds. But, they are proposing boulevard trees, which is consistent with our, uh, ordinance and policy. And then, they're also including a couple more over-story trees in the backyards of all these units. And then, they will be doing a shrubbery, uh, detail along the front of the homes.
Okay, again, this is preliminary and we'll see the final. Correct?
Uh, I make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash ninety-nine approving the preliminary plat and conditional use permit.
Yes, second?
So, a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wang to, again, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash ninety-nine approving preliminary plat and, and conditional use permit for Shepherd of the Hills Townhomes, so. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Very good, thank you.
Very much.
Moves us to item, uh, eight B, appointment of an independent financial auditor.
Mayor, Councilmember, that I'm in front of you tonight has to do with our annual financial audit. Uh, we are required, uh, by state statute each year to do an audit of our city finances. We actually just went through the results of last year's a couple meetings ago. Uh, and, uh, the, every five years, we've been going through a process of actually considering, uh, who to use for the, for the next five-year period. Noel Grasik, our administrative service director, is here, uh, and I'll have him talk a little bit about the, the recommendation that's being made and the reasons behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Um, the city council appoints an independent auditor. Uh, as a part of that engagement, they do the audit of both the city and the city, um, pays for the audit of the Chaska Fire Relief Association because their report is included in the city's, um, financial reports. The engagement with MMKR has just completed the most recent five-year period. In twenty fourteen, we did a request for proposal, a formal request for proposal process, received six responses to that. And at that time, we had two finalists, um, that really qualified from both a technical perspective and from a price perspective, um, with MMKR being one of those two finalists. And based on years of experience with them, we elected to go forward with that at this time. Uh, before doing that formal request for proposal, we did approach MMKR to ask if they would like to submit a renewal proposal for another five years. Um, and that's what they have brought forth and what we're presenting tonight, which is the renewal from MMKR at this time. The reason for doing this at this point is the formal proposal process is rather time-intensive for both the city and. for both the city and for the auditors. Um, we did find that the two finalists were very strong compared to the other four that we reviewed, uh, five years ago. And we also are currently in the process of, uh, bringing three new staff members in the finance department through the, the audit for the first time. Kelly is our new finance manager. We have Aaron Barnum, who is our senior accountant. And we've added a accountant with, uh, um, Matt Burt, who is, um, just started this spring. So we have three people who are less than three years. Each of them plays a key lead role, lead role in the overall audit process. So by having a continuity of MMKR for another five-year engagement period, we'd be able to continue to focus on changes we're working on, using our new financial system and bringing these new people up to speed on using those tools in-house. Um, a new auditor, we're very receptive to that. We have no apprehension about making a change in the auditor, but it would mean there'd be significant additional efforts that would have to go into the first couple of years of the new auditor in terms of just some changes that they have to document as a part of that new audit process. The decision is really up to council at this point on how you would like to proceed, um, in terms of continuing the engagement with MMKR, who has always shown themselves to be very flexible and responsive to the needs of the city. Or if you would like to have us consider some sort of change in who the auditor should be.
Anyone? I, I just wanna ask, cause I, I thought I heard somewhere, since I've been mayor, that it, that it's, I get the part about the continuity and all that, but that you should switch auditors periodically just to make sure? And I, I don't know, how do you determine that when that time comes?
You know, I think that really, I, we have, in my thirty years with the city, we did make one, excuse me, two changes in auditors. One was really to improve the overall quality of the audit services that were being delivered. And the second one was after a three-year engagement, basically due to some pricing issues and some additional services that they were claiming were outside of scope with the audit. So since then, we've been with MMKR for the twenty years. Um, there's not a fixed standard in terms of when you would rotate. It's really one of those things, we've had some internal policy discussions as to how long we should stay with a particular auditor. Um, at this point, I'm not recommending that we stay, I'm not recommending that we change. Um, it's really something that we are here to respond to what council feels would be appropriate. The one thing I would caution at this point is, we have talked with MMKR about this renewal. Um, one of the changes that we made in this renewal was that we did agree to, um, having three bond issues as a part of the general level of scope of services for the audit each year. This is in particular to resp-, uh, to the situation we had in two thousand seventeen where we sold seven bond issues. And that created significant additional work for them to have to do. Um, and that made it difficult for them to sort of deliver the audit within the price that they had bid. So we have sort of established that three, um, three bond issues as a base. And then if there are more bond issues, there is always standard language. It says if there's additional services, they have the right to quote that out. And so that's some flexibility that we've built in rather than taking that hit. So I think that's another example of how MMKR has agreed to work with us compared to some other firms who would just come forth and say, we're gonna call all of these additional efforts out of scope and that's what led to our change last time.
I don't know, did I miss something? Cause you said now they'll do three and before they used to do seven? Am I missing something there or?
No, we. Before they were supposed to do three and they ended up doing seven. So they ended up doing a lot, they ended up, what's that?
They, did they charge us or not? That's right.
Uh, I believe they kept under their same, they kept under their same pricing that they had given us, but it went sort of above and beyond what they had made their price based on.
So, like I said, I, I don't know that world, I just, you know, I, I, I have to look at what you're recommending and, and.
To me, the big one here is how many new people we have in our finance department. And, uh, I think it's always good to go out for, uh, an RFP. But I think you also have to weigh it with how many other things are happening new at the same time. And, you know, if, you know, one of the things I think is good about this proposal is if we get into it a couple of years and we say, you know, it's, 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 we prob-, now people are sort of up to see that it's probably good that we go out for an RFP. We have the ability to do it and not be completely locked into the five-year. It gives us a five-year pricing so what, we know what, what the plan for, but doesn't necessarily say that we couldn't go out for an RFP once people are up to, up to speed.
I, I, like I said, I just, somewhere I remember that I thought I heard that and I just wanted to ask the question.
Well, and I think it's, it's a, it's a healthy thing to be looking at that because, I mean, they're the people who are basically reviewing your books. And everybody is, you know, every accounting firm like this is held to the same standards, but it is the same people that are looking at it, so, yeah.
So question about, actually in relation to that, what's been the continuity with, of the people from, um, MMKR that's been working with the city? Has it been the same people or have they had a lot of turnover?
With any audit firm like this, they're always, you know, evaluating new staff and moving staff up. So I'd say typically we'll see, you know, one to two new people each year as an entry-level auditor. Um, we typically see an in-charge in place for anywhere from, I'd say about three to five years. Um, in the engagement that we've had with MMKR, Bill Lauer, who was at the meeting last time, has been our in-charge partner. Um, there is always a second partner at the firm who is reviewing the, um, the report before the, uh, opinion is issued by the auditors. And Jackie Heigl was also at the last meeting with council. That's a part of that transition of where she's now a principal with the firm and has, um, in the process of transitioning some of the clients from Bill to Jackie. Jackie is actually one of the auditors who started with MMKR as a general auditor and has worked her way all the way up in the past twenty years.
I just have one other question. And, and I know we, we've been working on this fire relief together for ten years, but it just still seems like the relief audit is so expensive in comparison when you're doing the whole city and just the relief. Is there a reason behind that?
It's, it's based on the number of hours to go through. There's a significant volume of investment records that have to be reviewed and reconciled. Um, there's significant pension expense because they have to evaluate the, um, each and every individual member's cost that was paid and review that. So it's really a function of the hours that they have to do in order to complete the, um, um, the, the test of the records and then the checklist of compliance with state regulations. The, uh, the proposals.
Seems like such a small piece to me, but I.
The proposals from a price perspective, when we looked at this five years ago, were very consistent across the board. It's not like we saw one firm was, you know, very high or another one was, you know, low, uh, uh, by any means. All of the prices were in a, you know, pretty tight range.
Again, like I say, you're, you're the expert of this field and I, you know, I'm gonna take your recommendation as, as a, cause I certainly would be the last guy to say, no, we're switching, cause it, you know, I just wanna make sure we're good. Cause that's the only thing, you know, about an audit is, is just wanna make sure we do it right. And, you know, we've been very successful, I, I, and I know that, so, but I, I just need you to know for myself, so.
Sure.
All right, anyone else, a question? Entertain a motion to appoint, uh, MMKR PR, our financial auditor.
Motion to appoint MMKR, our financial auditor.
Second.
All right, so a motion by council member Hatfield, second by council member McGraw to, uh, appoint the independent auditor, which is MMKR. Discussion. Pretty well handled that. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. Moves us to, uh, eight C, letter of intent for the part thirty improvements with Learning Links.
Mayor, councilor, the item in front of you tonight is to consider a letter of intent with the Learning Links of Chaska for the part thirty improvements that we've been talking about over the past several months. Uh, just a reminder, the Learning Links of Chaska is a five oh one C three, uh, local nonprofit, uh, who has really, uh, taken up the, the cause of, of really trying to make, uh, partner with the city to make our, uh, part thirty a barrier-free experience. So barrier-free from a physical, uh, but also economic perspective to open up that facility to as many people as possible. As we've looked at it, this has made a lot of sense for us to consider in sort of the life cycle of the part thirty, uh, course itself. Uh, the course is, uh, going to be turning fifty years old, uh, coming up in a year. And there's been some changes out there, but there's no, been no major improvements that have been made over that time. And, you know, just as a piece of it, uh, which is a big deal to running a golf course and really is a big deal for the part thirty is our irrigation system is that old. And, uh, I can tell you that the pieces to be able to continue to make that run, uh, uh, on an annual basis, it takes a lot of jimmy rigging to, to, to get that running on a, on a annual basis. And so, um, it is something that if we want to continue to have the part thirty be an asset that we provide in the public, we're going to have to put some kind of improvements into it as we go into the future and, and the near future. And, uh, it made some sense to look at, well, how could we make this course, uh, something above and beyond uh, what it is now with improvements that we already need to make, uh, to make it something that can open it to a broader range of, of people in the community. Uh, Learning Links of Chaska is in the process now of going out and doing fundraising and they've had some success, uh, that, uh, they'll be able to talk about, uh, when they come up. And so now's a really good time for us not to necessarily put together the final agreement, uh, with them, uh, but really sort of lay out sort of the, the major terms and conditions, uh, of an agreement so that when they're talking to their funders, uh, that they have some sense about, uh, what's being asked of them. And, uh, you know, this is a unique partnership and I think it's important for anybody who's gonna put a significant amount of dollars, uh, into this project to really understand what this partnership, uh, would look like. I think it's important to point out that Kevin and Dave both have about the same shirt on. I just noticed that as they're walking out, but.
One, we need sunglasses for, the other, we don't.
It really caught my attention as you're walking across the, uh, the stage there. So one of the things that we felt was really important to, to look at when we were putting together what seems to be a fair split here is really what are the things that we know we're gonna have to do if we were just to do this by ourselves? And so to me, irrigation replacement is something we have to do. If we're gonna do this by ourselves, uh, when we first started talking about this back, uh, probably when you started as mayor, we, you know, we always had sort of a placeholder out there of I think about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we knew was gonna come sometime. Well, that was ten years ago, so it's.
Last year it was four fifty.
Yeah, so, you know, we'd, we'd at least have to put in about four hundred thousand dollars to replace that irrigation system. The other thing we really need to address, uh, permanently is our parking situation. We lease our parking stalls now, it costs us fourteen thousand dollars a year. We've been doing this for years and years and years and it's just economically a bad decision. And so I think if we were gonna do anything going into the future, we need to address our parking situation on a permanent, uh, perspective. And we have looked at a conceptual plan to be able to look at how we could actually accommodate that. And, you know, the general cost of a, a surface parking lot with acquiring property to, to be able to put in drainage, all those types of things is typically about ten thousand dollars per stall. Uh, so between those two, we know that we have something in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars that we'd put into the course, uh, just to improve it, to keep it the same as it is now. Uh, if we kept it the same as it is now, uh, we can probably expect about the same results, uh, that we get as far as the number of rounds, which is about, uh, fourteen to fifteen thousand rounds per year. We'd also have to do something with, uh, moving the clubhouse. You know, it's a, a facility that needs, uh, maintain and it's really just not in the right location if we were to move the parking, uh, stall. So, you know, I, I put in the staff report, we're probably in about that seven hundred thousand to million dollar range of improvements if we did it by ourselves. Uh, one of the things that the Learning Links of Chaska has done over the past several months is to go through a process of, of putting together a concept plan and then going beyond that, the concept plan, uh, but, uh, really focusing on what are the estimated costs to actually put that together? And based on those plans, we, we have had our engineers from Stan Tech verify, uh, pricing so that we know we're aiming in the right, uh, range. Uh, that'd be about one point five million dollars to do the course, uh, improvements. Uh, and then, uh, that's not including a clubhouse, uh, redo, but that's something that, that would need to be looked at as we move into the, the future. So based on that, based on, on what we know we'd have to do from a city perspective to, to reinvest back into, use that information to really develop a letter of intent and what seems fair, uh, between Learning Links of Chaska and, and the City of Chaska. So you'll see in the staff report and then the attached letter, uh, of intent, um, you know, basically divided into the responsibilities of Learning Links of Chaska. Uh, main ones for them is that they would establish a fundraising goal of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for phase one of the part, uh, thirty renovations, uh, which could include cash or if we had in-kind contributions from like contractors or things like that to, to make those improvements. One of the requirements in that seven fifty, that the one point five million includes design costs in there and so that they would put fifty thousand dollars upfront, uh, into that so that we could really start the design, uh, portion of this, uh, now. Uh, so that we're in a place that by the spring of next year, if the dollars have been raised, we can move forward and actually start making those improvements. We'd want them to, to make sure that they re-, uh, review and approve the, the final phase one construction plans, uh, assisted marketing the project to end user, users. And really actively participate with, with city staff, particularly with the, the part thirty and town course, with developing programs and activities that really promote it as being accessible, barrier-free and adaptive, uh, golf. From the city's perspective, we'd commit to, uh, redeveloping the part thirty based on that concept plan and utilizing the, the golf course architect, uh, who helped put that together. There's a construction approach and methodology that's outlined in the concept plan. And quite frankly, that methodology is what drives the price, uh, for it. So we, you know, we really have to stick close to that. That we'd commit, uh, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, so it's phase one, uh, of the, the project. And when, phase two, we'd really focus on after, uh, getting the, the golf course improvements is that, uh, is the actual, uh, facility for a clubhouse, uh, that we really focus on. What are the things, the city's role in that would be really focusing on what are the things that we need, uh, for, uh, for a, for a clubhouse facility? And really those things are above and beyond that really meet their mission would be the things that they'd be responsible for contributing dollars towards that phase two. We don't have good estimates on phase two yet, so we're just not at a point where we can define that. But that would be something we'd be working on in the future. As part of this project, basically we would act, I mean, we're gonna be the owners and long-term maintainers of this property. And so, um, basically it really is our job, uh, to be able to, uh, initiate, put the plans together, uh, be able to go through and manage a project, go through, you know, the, the whole construction pro-, uh, project, just like we would any other city facility. So it, it, uh, lays that out. And then talks about, uh, the things that, that we would commit to. Uh, so putting a, a minimum of six thousand rounds of golf annually towards youth, disabled or other underrepresented groups as recommended by a Learning Links board. And that two thousand of these rounds would be made, made available at no cost to really, uh, be able to, uh, hit that economic side. How do we, how do we make that, uh, available for people? This really works for us because it, you know, we have a lot of capacity at that course right now. If you think back to the year two thousand, we had thirty to thirty-one thousand rounds. Right now, we probably have about fifteen thousand rounds. There's a lot of capacity to grow there and, uh, uh, being able to, uh, provide those in exchange for the dollars that they're actually putting towards the capital cost of this project. Uh, we defined it as a twenty-five-year period, cause that really, uh, ties back to the, the, the value of those passes compared to what they're actually putting in, uh, to the, uh, to the project. And then going into the future, and I, I really think just like any facility like our community center, uh, curling center, everything really gets back to programming. Uh, that we, uh, put a real emphasis, not just on people coming out and playing rounds, but we put an emphasis on actually programming and creating things that are gonna introduce more people uh, to the game of golf and, uh, you know, do, uh, more. the game of golf and, you know, do more of those park and rec type services that actually bring people to the, to the course.
So John Kellin then would be the, would help.
Yeah, but we've.
Nine rounds are available.
But we've really talked about, there's, there's a real role that the park and rec department can, can fulfill in this too, because they do that for a living.
Would we keep foot golf on there?
Yeah, the, the, the plan would be to keep that on there.
Read that in there or I didn't? I'll see if that's why.
It's, you know, one of the concepts of this course is to try to make it as open to as many people as possible. So they even put the trails in the center of the, the course that are sort of out of the driving range of people to be able to give people ability to get out there even if they're not playing golf.
Pull this back to into that cross-country meet at all?
I, I actually just was in contact with Scott Stallman today and, and said, yeah, I mean, that's, the, the objective is to keep, try to open this up to more people than what are currently using it. So, you know, again, this is a letter of intent. We still need to get into a final agreement once we get further, really defines the details. But it's really important that, that the Learning Links of Chaska's are going to these parties are able to accurately represent what the deal would generally look like. And so it seemed like an appropriate time, especially with where they're at in fundraising and, and they can speak to that about where they're at. But, you know, based on the discussions we've had, I do not think it's out of the question that our spring of next year target to try to move forward, I think is feasible.
Has the, so I was at the informational meeting in June. Has anything changed in, in the, yeah?
No, in fact, the, the concept plan that I attached along with the narrative.
Was the same, correct?
Was the same and it's really the stuff that came out of those sessions.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just commenting on it because I did go to the informational meeting. I thought it was a really ingenious way of redesigning the course. It sounds like, if my memory serves me correct, that the, with the irrigation part of it, that the rainwater collection is a big part of irrigating the course and that the, it sounds like with phase two with the clubhouse that they're trying to really make it as economically like low feasible cost as possible as far as with the employee, employee on staff and just even, you know, the idea of bringing a food truck in, you know, as far as just kind of ingenious ideas of creating a service for golfers that are there, but that are as far as the labor not as a high cost. So it was, it sounded exciting and.
To me even, just reversing the, the course.
Yeah.
And going the opposite direction was like.
Yeah.
That's the way it used to be.
It was pretty enlightening.
And then the idea of, you know, just the barrier free is that the intent wasn't that they, that people were to play all the rounds, that they could just go on and do what they wanted to do and then go. It was, it sounded, I don't know, it sounded very welcoming, so.
Yeah, and with ten holes, that gives them the ability to be able to do some programming while still having people go out and golf.
Yeah.
You know, because they're, the, the putting green that they're, the putting green would just be open to the public to just come and use. And it's huge. And, and, you know, it's got really interesting, I mean, it'd be fun just to take your family out and use that, but then to be able to program that along with a tenth hole that could either be used as extra round in, in an actual round or to be able to be used for programming, I think was really neat.
Yeah, I think the only, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily even call it negative feedback, was someone had asked about a driving range and why there was a lack of a driving range. So I don't know if that was an explanation that I know you want to touch on. You had a really good explanation of it, but I just know that that was something that was addressed at that meeting, so.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Eric Snyder with Learning Links of Chaska. So the, the driving range question has come up a couple of times and the, you know, the, the design was really clever. We, we solved lots of issues and, and the way we, if you talk to John Kellin, I think John's concerned about having a, a dedicated driving range on that thirty acre parcel is that there just really isn't room and they're very labor intensive and, and so the way we sort of addressed that need is, and Matt referred to it a second ago, the, the course is convertible. So if you have a group, if, if you have sort of regular fee paying golf going on, but you want to do training at the same time, you can convert. I think it's the eighth tee box and the seventh hole to sort of, so you can use, you can do a putt chip and kind of longer shot training on the course while you still have paying golfers going on. So you can practice longer shots, but you'd want to have an instructor there and you wouldn't just be able to rent a bucket of balls. You can still do longer shots, but it would be through programming, not just something you do before you, I guess warming up before you play. So that, that's how we decided to solve that question. Thank you.
You can talk a little bit about where you're at on fundraising.
Yeah, so, so we have consciously sort of held back on doing public fundraising until we had a chance to get in front of you tonight. But assuming that our fundraising target is seven hundred and fifty thousand or half of the course renovation budget, as of today, we have three hundred thousand in, in actual pledged dollars and money in the bank and another hundred thousand in soft pledges, which are verbal, verbal commitments that we don't have agreements for yet. So as of today, we're a little bit over our halfway mark without really having publicly announced the, the campaign. So that's, that's a, a pretty good spot to be in.
So you're happy where you're, where you're at with?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think we do, we would like to break ground in the spring and so if you assume you can get in the ground in April, we'd like to have a contractor under contract in early 2020, which means we'd like to have the money raised by the end of this calendar year. So there is a sense of urgency to sort of get the rest of the money rounded up, but it's, it's doable.
And we're starting the process now with working with Stantec to really develop grading plans and all that kind of stuff that we're going to need to get through permitting process so that we try not to hold up the timeline of this.
We'll never get through the permitting.
Don't say that.
One thing I, I noticed in the letter of intent, it says to continue to use Goodman Parking and I, in, in.
Oh, well, I mean, it's, it's an option, but only if, only if there's no cost to it. I mean.
So you're looking at if we can get it in time?
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna, there's reasons why the Goodman Group may want to work with the city on this and primarily their future development area and being able to use our storm water. And so there's.
They do part of that storm water?
They did, but there's no, there's no rights that were ever established on this. And so, you know, we've been having discussions with them. I mean, the best solution is not to duplicate a parking lot. I mean, if we're able, if we're able to utilize a parking lot and we eliminate the cost of it, that's going to be the most cost-effective option that there is and you don't want to create more impervious service than you need to. But if that's not feasible, we need to have an option.
Yeah, because like I said, I just, I, I just, I don't know, I can't find it now, but I, I have it circled in here because I thought that was one of the primary goals, to get that fourteen thousand dollar bill off every year.
Well, that's the goal. How we, how we do it is, is there's multiple ways we can do it, but the ultimate goal is to eliminate that cost.
Yeah, because I was looking at that. I was wondering like when I, because I saw the plan, I didn't see any plan for where parking would go. So, okay, so let's say the Goodman Group doesn't bite for whatever reason, what are the other options of where to put that parking?
So we've actually, Learning Links and the city have been work, or have worked with the Hazeltine Shores property to the east of there. And they've agreed as part of this development that they would donate, that there's a triangle piece of property that's just the east of there. What we'd likely end up doing is pushing the putting, we'd be pushing the putting green over farther to the east and then putting parking more center of where Hunter Mark would come, where Hunter Mark and Hazeltine Boulevard connect. But again, if you don't have to put impervious service in there more, it's, it's better if we can use existing, but it's not worth it to us to continue to pay that cost.
Absolutely. Over time, it'll be like far more expensive.
Yep. It already has.
It already is.
Yeah.
We had an agreement, kind of worked out, then they backed out.
Well, there, it was part of the whole development.
That whole development.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't do their, whatever they were.
The project didn't go forward.
Yeah, we had groundbreaking and everything.
The senior development.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all right. In general, I like the plan. Only thing I have a little concern about not being the expert on golf by any means, as I proved on the golf course today. You know, we talked about this forty thousand dollars annually that would mean the support through the operations or over to the course, thirty-five addition, thirty-five hundred additional rounds. I understand it's thirty-five additional rounds, but really it's fifty-five hundred additional rounds because two thousand of that, we're basically giving at no cost. Is that a fair way of thinking?
Yeah, that's, you know, that, it'd be, it'd be once that we'd have to generate additional. Now of this, of the six thousand, it's two thousand of those would be free rounds. The other four thousand would be paid rounds.
Yeah, so like I said, there's thirty-five to break even.
Yeah.
Plus two thousand rounds are at no cost because.
Another way to look at this though, is if we want to keep the course, we're going to have no choice at some point. And this gives us an, an opportunity to potentially gain new revenue.
We've been saying that for ten years.
Yeah.
So the no choice is coming sooner than later.
Correct. I, I, I mean, and I get it because I, I totally understand the, the no choice basically means to put it on the table is you sell the land and it's gone and it gets developed. And once it's developed, it's gone. I get that. I just, my concern is just, is the rounds because golf as a sport across the U.S. is becoming less popular and the numbers are down. And I, and I don't, I'm not an expert. I can't say, yep, that's, that's a concern here. That is, that is my only concern. I think what Learning Links is doing is amazing, getting more people there. That is my only hesitation is that, that number, I don't, I mean, it's a big number, but compared, when you say capacity, I struggle with that because yes, in two thousand, we're at thirty thousand rounds. Now less people are there because of the condition, but there's just less people golfing.
There is.
Which is the struggle to understand where that number is.
One of the things that's changing in the market though, is we started seeing those rounds go down for two primary reasons. One of them was town courts went in. Second reason was Hala Greens went in over in Chan House. Highway one oh one is going to be constructed up through that bluff area and I know they're at least having discussions with purchasing that property for that. So it's a possibility that that.
That's the one course they ever golfed.
May not be.
She lived and told me they were, because I said, how are you going to get around the golf course? She says they can do that. Last year.
Yeah, that's, I.
And maybe they're closer now and they can't do that.
Yeah.
Because I think it's pretty tight. I don't know how they can do it, but.
Well, another thing I like about this is that, like, a lot of it's the marketing on it and the, where golf is going down, this idea of person-centered thinking where there's more things for people, you know, with disabilities, whether, wherever they land to do, that's skyrocketing. So that option, I mean, I follow people on social media that have varying disabilities and they're going out and doing amazing things and one of them is golfing. And it's really exciting to see. So I think that's where that, those two things meet because I think you're right, like, yep, that's going down, but what's going up is that the, the, the specialness of the course.
Well, I think that, that's the key thing is that, you know, it's, demand is always there when you have a unique amenity. The curling center is a good example of that. It's a relatively unique amenity in the Twin Cities, so people come from a distance to go there as a destination. There's, not every golf course is an accessible golf course like what Learning Links will be. So people will travel a distance to get there. So when you have like a, what's a Miracle Fields, things like that, people will travel a distance to go to those places. So, you know, this is, this is creating destinations that are unique.
I also speak personally as somebody that is terrible at golf. I had a really horrible experience a long, long time ago that really soured me on golf and the only course that I do golf at is Hala because it's small and it's just very casual. And when you presented the idea concept, this is somewhere where I think I could actually golf and not be ashamed or harassed, which was what happened to me. And so I, I like this idea and, and in addition of it, just like I draw back to, it just seems very well thought out as far as economically sustainable and like low cost to keep, to maintain, which I think is just a double bonus, so.
And I think I would, I would be concerned more so if we weren't partnering with Learning Links and putting the money into it. Because that would scare me. Because I totally agree with your golf is on a slide, but I know that the town course has really started developing a pretty good juniors program. And that, the, the par thirty or whatever this name will be is designed for juniors and seniors. And that's really the target market and I think that market's growing. It's that middle-aged group that's not playing the eighteen-hole courses as much, but will go out and spend two hours at a nine-hole course versus five hours at a eighteen-hole course. And I think that, I still believe that by really rehabbing this course and, and adding all the extra amenities, we'll, we'll again make this a strong and viable course. Because I, I would be really worried if we were going out on our own to do this. Just because we're really not, we're putting in something underground that no one sees, but they know when it's not there. And, and now we're doing everything. So I, I really think that that's going to change how, how golf is played. Because that really is, if you go out there, it's usually either people my age or it's younger kids playing.
Well.
And that's the idea is to go there because they don't have to worry about some group that's a scratch golfer that's pushing them. They can go out there and play at their pace.
And one of the things that's really changing in the golfing world is people's desire to play five hours. And people, people still want to play golf, but they don't want to spend five hours doing it. The great thing about this course is if you want to, I mean, you can probably play it an hour and a half.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a nice short course if it's in good condition. And I think we are expanding it to a much broader market, which to me, if you make the assumption that we're going to keep the par thirty, this is like best case scenario because it, it really opens up that market to additional people.
I just wanted to add the, so good evening, you all know me from Iconic. So they have reached out to us from an iconic perspective and we are very excited from our disabilities and inclusivity, right? Because we do see the opportunity of, of those people with disabilities being able to enjoy a sport or at least have a social interaction with the rest of the community. In addition to that, what I have challenged them and I will challenge all of you as well, don't think about it as people with disability only being attendees, but also being employees, right? So this is an opportunity for the, for the council, for the city to provide an opportunity for them, for people with disability to have a job, right? So as you all know, Iconic is really focused on employment opportunities. And so as the design is happening, as the thought is occurring, think about it not only from attendees, but also as employees. And I think that that will be a win-win for the community as well, right? Goes with the mission of the city and it goes with what we all want to do and newer generations, what they're looking for, that experience.
Another great thing is it's going to come at the same time that we do the Miracle League field. So I mean, it's really, we're able to really promote the, the things that we're doing with programming in our parks and rec department. We have a new adaptive programmer that's on staff and then be able to really pair it with the facilities that we're developing in the community to address that.
I think it speaks a lot to our mission too, so it's a good thing.
We've taken on a lot of unique projects and I think this is just another one. And I, I really think, I think it's a saving grace for the par thirty because I, I'm just really concerned about it. Any further about, without, without the need to have something like this under it. All right, what's your thoughts?
So basically the, the recommendation is to authorize me to enter into a letter of intent with them. Okay.
Again, this is still a letter of intent.
Yep.
There's a long process to go yet, but it's just that, that we're on board to allow them to say, hey, let's go after it. And then we'll work out the final details. So, so basically what we'd be looking for at this point, if there are no further questions, is, is that we're looking for Matt to draft a letter of intent about the par thirty improvements with Learning Links, so.
And make a motion to, you know, to draft a letter of intent.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Roy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hadfield to, again, to have the city administrator create a letter of intent for the par thirty improvements with Learning Links.
Just that clarification, a letter of intent is attached. So what's there is what I would send out, so.
Good to prove that.
That's right, I did, I was, been reading that. And then we're going to keep that in there about the Goodman, that's just the final, that's part of the finals.
Yeah, it still gets back to the objective is get rid of that payment.
Do we need to change the verbiage because it says it's a letter of understanding versus letter of intent, so.
We certainly can, yeah.
I mean, just to make it consistent, so. I mean, just to make it consistent, so.
Yep.
Yep. Whichever one, so, with the motion for a letter of intent or a letter of understanding?
Whatever it says on there.
Here it says, yeah.
Letter of understanding.
Here it says, understand.
Let's, let's do whatever it says on that, on the, on that draft.
In the draft, so, that's the move to approve the letter of understanding for Chaska Par thirty.
So you're changing your motion to the letter of understanding?
Yep.
And the second agrees?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll have to go through that again. So, so it's a letter of understanding for the Par thirty improvements with Learning Links. You're good, Eric?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side? We're good. Thank you. Thanks for being there. All right, uh, now we move to, uh, eight D, which is Adopt Ordinance nine sixty-eight, uh, Adopt Resolution twenty nineteen dash ninety-nine, Ordinance Amending Chapter fourteen, Article five, related to motor vehicles and traffic therein relating to motorized golf carts.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm going to turn this over to Nate, because he's been involved in, in looking at this ordinance.
All right. Mayor and Councilmembers, this is a proposed change to city council ordinance, um, Chapter fourteen, Article five, Sections ninety-six through one hundred and five, um, which sets provisions related to motorized golf carts. Uh, currently, we have ordinance in place that was passed a number of decades ago, um, which was really intended to allow for golf carts to be used for, um, handicap purposes or needs, um, for, and it was limited to downtown Chaska. So allowing golf carts to be used for folks who need them for handicap mobility to, to navigate downtown. And that's what was set before the Town Course was created. Um, the community was a very different size, and it was very different at that time. Recently, uh, it's been, um, brought to our attention that there's a number of folks who, uh, live up and around the Town Course area who desire to use, um, golf course, golf carts to access the Town Course. By practice, we have allowed at the Town Course people to bring their personal golf carts to the course. Um, and in all practicality, those get driven to the Town Course, um, to, to be able to do that. So that's been going on for some amount of time, uh, by practice. Now, per ordinance, technically speaking, that isn't something that the ordinance allows for, but it's something that has been allowed to happen. There's been questions about that that have come up recently, so what we've tried to do is, is update our ordinance, um, to provide, uh, for that to occur, um, in a legal way, and also provide guidelines, um, that people can follow and understand, so there's consistency there. Also, so that there's an ability for our police department, um, to enforce, um, when needed, um, if there are folks who are using golf carts in a way that's, you know, not appropriate. So, what, oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear me? So what, what's being proposed, um, is for folks who own a golf cart, um, in order to drive it to the golf course, uh, that they would need to obtain a license. Uh, folks would need to be sixteen years of age, um, and hold a valid driver's license in order to operate the golf cart. I'm just going to point out some of the major, uh, details of the ordinance here. People who are using the golf carts under the license would, um, need to designate the location of their origin, so likely their house, and the destination would be the Town Course, and then the road, or the most direct path, um, to get there. So that would be part of the license. We'd be allowing them to drive on streets that have a speed limit of thirty miles per hour or less. The trail system, we would not generally allow for the trail system to be used, except for the trails that follow along the corridors of Pioneer Trail and the Varia Road, because those are roads that have a higher speed limit than thirty miles per hour, so it's necessary, uh, to use trails there, um, in order to actually get to the Town Course, which would be the destination. Uh, we do set out an application process. Uh, there would be a permit, uh, that would then be received. The permit would need to be, um, displayed on the golf cart itself. And what we're, um, set up to do, and what we're anticipating that we would do at this point, would be to provide, uh, basically a printed-out, um, license, and then a, um, laminated envelope that someone could attach to their golf course, golf cart, and then place on the front of the golf cart, so that it's visible, um, that's for law enforcement and purposes, and for the Town Course to, to clearly see that the license is there. Um, so that would be the permit. Uh, there's two permits that are provided for. There's a travel permit, so those are folks who need, who are desiring to use their golf cart, um, to travel from their origins, or their home, to the Chaska Town Course. And then there's also a handicap permit, which allows for travel on designated roadways within the city for people who need, who do need that, for the, their mobility, uh, Trying to pick out what else we want to get through. Times of operation would be limited to sunrise and sunset, I think within discretion, um, when it comes to enforcement, obviously, if someone is finishing their round of golf towards the end of the day, they're going to need to be able to get their golf cart home, so as long as they're being safe with doing that, I think that will be okay. Slow-moving-vehicle emblem and rear, rearview mirror. Um, that would be required for the golf cart to have a slow-moving-vehicle emblem, and that is per state statute. And a rearview mirror for safety purposes, that again is a state statute, um, item. That's generally the, the details of the ordinance that's being, um, being proposed. The travel permit for individuals, um, wanting to get their golf cart from their home to the Town Course would be limited for the area of the city that is west of McKnight Road and north of the Twin City and Western Railroad. Um, so generally speaking, Pioneer Trail, um, would be a good reference point for that as well. I guess from that, I would open it up to questions. Well, before I do that, actually, I just want to point out also that, in developing this ordinance, we did look at a lot of similar communities, um, that have golf courses within them, um, that have also, you know, developed some ordinance to allow for golf carts to be used within their city limits to access the golf, golf courses and things like that. So, um, we do feel that this is a ordinance that's very comparable, um, to a lot of other communities that are doing this sort of thing. And with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Hang on one second. Are there any questions up here before we open it up?
So I, I, I'm the one that moved this off of the consent agenda, because this is in my word, and I had some feedback over the weekend in regards to some of the stipulations that the, um, that the ordinance was imposing. And so I just, uh, wanted to make clear that, yeah, I, I did some research, and within the league of Minnesota cities, everything that is addressed in the, um, ordinance are things that, uh, that they require. So it's not as if the city of Chaska has really gone, really be of and beyond, you know, what is, um, required as far as, like, you ta, talked about in regards to the, um, rearview mirror, the slow-moving-vehicle sign, um, things of those, uh, nature. So, um, I just wanted to make it kind of clear, I know there's two of you, but I know that there is a lot of neighbors- Right. -that were upset about this, and I, I can understand that, uh, you know, it's kind of a shock, but, um, as it stands right now, people are not allowed to drive their golf carts. And so this is kind of allowing the ability that, off of your property, that you, you can go to the course with your cart and, and not get in trouble, um, with that fact. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, I wanted to allow you guys the opportunity by taking it off, thank you for waiting, um, to vo, voice your opinion. But I did do a lot of research, because obviously, you know, who wants to go through a lot of rigamarole? But I think first and foremost, I, I think these things are in place because of safety purposes, um, and not necessarily to kind of jam people up as far as, as that goes. Um, one, one, uh, I just had two areas of feedback, and I'm not sure if either one of you guys is, um, Barb, but, uh, s- someone had, um, contacted me, they, they were sort of, um, I wouldn't say upset, but they, they just were concerned that we were really pinpointing the area and location, because we have two other courses. So I don't know what the policy is in regards to Hazeltine. Um, and I'm assuming the Par thirty, they maybe have golf carts there, but it's such a small course, I don't even think they probably-
Nobody really uses, we do have some golf carts there to, for people to use if they want, but I don't think I've ever seen anybody bring their own cart there.
You know, I don't know how we would address something like that, but, um, someone had said, well, what if, you know, I can't remember what the neighborhood is called, but the, the adjoining neighborhood, the Hazeltine, you know, driving their carts, but I just didn't know, you know, I'm, I guess I'm asking for-
I don't think, I don't think Hazeltine allows-
Okay.
-other people's carts.
I, I didn't, I kind of, that, that was kind of my-
I would highly doubt that, but don't know it for a fact.
Hard for, uh, so, for anyone to get- That was, that was one thing. And then the other thing was, um, you know, the, the sunrise sunset, just being able to have dinner afterwards. Um, someone had told me that in Arizona, uh, they make it like a time. But the thing that's hard is that Arizona and Minnesota are different climate-wise, and so I don't know with, you know-
And time-wise.
-daylight savings time and just time, you know, not saying that you guys are probably driving your golf carts in the dead of winter, but, um, I don't know how we would address that, if there is some sort of leeway with that, uh, to say, like, maybe, I don't know, so much time after sunset, or something like that, and, and have it be open. Um, otherwise, the other thing was inclement weather, what if it rains while you're out, you know? But I think that might be just something that, a little bit of leeway in the sense of if you're on your way home-
Well, I think it has to do with-
With your cart.
I think it has to do with philosophy of why you have ordinances like this to begin with. You know, the police department, you know, is not going to go out and, you know, find reasons to pull people over for a golf cart. The reason you have ordinances like this in place is really to address the people who, uh, are abusing, uh, driving on the road. And we do have some of that. You know, we have some of that, especially with KIT, um, in neighborhoods, and it's not just, uh, it's not just restricted to golf carts. I mean, there's, there's neighborhoods where you see, uh, little mini bikes, or, uh, you know, all kinds of things that are motorized that are just not very safe. And so these ordinances, the real purpose is, is to give people who are, uh, you know, using this wisely and, and, and in, in the intent of what, you know, what we want to see and use it for, in a way that they have the legal ability to do it, but to provide some guidelines to make sure that people who are not operating in a safe manner, uh, that we're able to really put a stop to that.
That, that's all I had, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you guys kind of understood that right now, you can't drive your carts, and we're trying to make it happen for you guys to be able to drive your carts, but there are just, is some safety stipulations that seem, I know, like rigamarole, but they're there for, for reasons, so.
All right, anyone else?
I have some thoughts, but I'd like to hear from them first.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, my name is Jeffrey Peterson, my wife Gloria Peterson. We live at twenty-nine fifty-nine Fairway Drive in Chaska. Um, and we agree with you, and, and quite a few of the neighbors have come together, and safety is a, is a concern, and it's all about safety, and we do support that. There's just a few things that you addressed, Councilmember Hubbard, you addressed already that we want to address. One of the things is, too, with the application, in the application, it says that we have to provide proof of insurance, which we will do, and that's, that's proper standards. But then also in the material that you sent out, it says that we have to have proof of insurance on our property when we're in the golf cart. So if we've already registered with the city and shown proof of insurance, what is the need to have additional proof of insurance on our property, on our person, when we're in the golf cart? Number two, then, on that also, it's, yeah?
We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a glove box, like, to carry our proof of insurance with us. So that would just kind of be a hassle to make sure we had it with us.
The other thing in the application permit, it says we have to register to all drivers. So that will not allow us to have any guests, family members from out of town taking our golf cart to the course, if they're playing without us. So that's another one. Do we really need to register every single member? If we have a travel permit on our golf cart already, it is registered, it does know that there is proof of insurance, what is the need to have everybody registered on the, on the certificate? Uh, number three on this, and I know this is only example, on this, uh, travel permit that you guys have built, you're putting the name and address of the individual on the permit, as it's shown here in this example. We do have concerns of the safety that now we are putting our name and our address on our golf carts. So if we happen to be golfing at Chaska Town Course, is somebody going to go to our house and possibly break into it, if they see our cart at the, at Oak nineteen? The other things on that, um, quite a few of us play in the leagues, the different leagues, and also the mixed leagues. We also have dinner at Oak nineteen quite a bit. There should be something in there in the guidelines to talk about sunset to, sunrise to sunset. Numerous times, we take the back path from, uh, the Town Course to our home, and it's well after dark. We all have lights on our golf carts, we have brake lights on our golf carts, we have mirrors on our golf carts. So there should be something that we feel should be written about that in the guidelines. Yes, I agree with you that, you know, we don't do anything wrong, so we're not, you know, but someday a police officer will come by and write us a ticket, it's a misdemeanor. I don't want that. We have more notes.
How does snowmobile vehicles-
That's not us. I think that's it.
What about the snowmobile vehicle?
Doesn't matter. We're not, that's for handicap.
Well-
Snowmobile vehicle, sign us for everybody.
I think I mentioned this earlier, and I don't know where we sit here as staff, but I, I think that there are ordinances for, like, snowmobiles that, if it's after the curfew, you have to be going direct home. So if you're out horsing around, or kids have them or something, now they can be ticketed. But if you are going, you're saying, I left the golf course, and I'm go, or I left from dinner, and I'm going straight home, I don't know if that's something that could be incorporated. To me, that seems like a simple fix. But I think you got to have the, the sunrise to sunset, or you start having neighbors complaining, because carts are whipping around, at least this way, you're going directly home and directly back, or, you know, what it-
And we do have, we do have that with our ordinances on snowmobile trails. You know, that, that's a direct-
I think that we could incorporate, and that would fix that one.
I think the other thing that we probably didn't anticipate with it is, uh, headlights on golf carts. Um, I mean, to me, that's sort of a game changer, too, as far as actually having the ability to be able to see when you're-
Right.
-you're doing that, too.
Well, I think it's headlights and taillights, because I think that, you know, the other issue is that if you're, if you're on the roadway, for some reason, then cars can move pretty fast. Like, I'd be really worried about, like, you know, someone clipping a, you know, a heck of a pedestrian or whatever in the road, and, you know, you don't see them. I, you know, last thing I want to do is take out a golf cart, because that takes a whole bunch of people at once. So, you know, if we were going to allow that, they'd have to have, you know, both headlights and taillights, like any other motorized vehicle, just for pure safety reasons.
Thank you.
And I, as, as far as your concern about not being able to carry it, I, I'm sure they make those, they have those things, you can stick it on your dash and slide your, your, your insurance card in, so you got it, it's always in your cart. That's a, I think that's a fairly simple fix. The name on a, on a pass, I'm not sure, um-
Do we have to put an address in there, or can we just have it be our first and last name?
Probably not. I mean, it's, I mean, the intent of it is, is to be able to show that the people who have the cart don't live in, like-
Live in, yeah.
Clover Ridge, and they're trying to drive up there. You know, again, this is really getting at, you know, trying to make sure that it's safe operations.
Right.
And if, if, you know, the, the big thing is, if people are operating unsafely, that's going to be pretty clear. Um, so, I don't know about Nate's feeling. That, that's probably something that's probably a detail that's probably not completely necessary.
Yeah, I think we can take a look and have a discussion about what's, what's absolutely necessary to have on that permit that's provided.
So, because I'm not really as concerned about, like, the name and address on the permit, because if you lived in Clover Ridge, you probably wouldn't get a permit anyway, because you didn't live in that area.
Well, you can't get one.
Right, you can't get one, right.
Yeah.
So, which point-
That's a good point, yeah.
So then you only need a permit number that was, you know, associated with that insurance, to say that, okay, well, you have insured vehicle, just like any other vehicle, right?[1761.04]
Yeah, and I think, I, I really think that the details as far as insurance and the address and stuff, I mean, tho- those are simple ones, uh, that, that I think we, we could address. Um, and I think what I hear you saying is from a nighttime perspective is, if we're gonna allow people, if people are gonna be out and making that trip back from a place when, when it's dark, or if it's inclement weather and they're coming back, that we just need to make sure that they have headlights, taillights, and the rear view mirror.
Yeah, and he said that they've got that, I don't know if they got that. I mean, because I'm with you on the sunset, because he, a lot of the golf carts out there, I don't think any of the carts out there have headlights, I don't know, I don't think. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that was the thought process that went into that, is there's no headlights, we don't want them sneaking down trails with no lights on them. And, and if that's the case, I mean, because actually, just like the, the four-wheelers that are out there, you, you can make them roadworthy, but they gotta have headlights and taillights and blinkers and all. I don't know if they need blinkers on them, but I, you know, but I, I think maybe, are, are, are we more comfortable if, if we table this issue?
Yeah, what I would suggest is, let's come, let's come back with the, the language. I, I mean, I don't hear anything you're saying is, is being, you know, something that's not feasible to address.
It's things that we maybe at, sitting at our level didn't think about.
Yep.
One item that I would say that I don't think we should, I, I do think we should have registered drivers. I do think it becomes a safety issue with, do they understand our roads, understand our trails, do they understand directions and everything like that? I, I think that ensures that, you know, you have a visitor from out of town, that they know what they're doing, they know, you know, how to operate. I, I don't think that's a tough ask. Um, I, I'm open to other ideas of addressing that, but I think part of.
When you say registered, do you mean?
They mentioned that it says on here that all, uh, they have to be.
Register all the drivers, and if they have guests from out of town.
They have a guest from out of town, but, you know, I think if there's a guest from out of town, I, I think they're, they're inherently gonna be a safety issue. Now, doesn't mean it's a high issue, but it's inherently different than the person who drives to that every day, right? Regardless of, of what it is. So, again, I, I think we can look at it and have the flexibility, but I think, you know, to me, it's all about safe. The other side of it, I, I, I like the idea of tabling, because I just, I gotta think more about it personally, because, um, thank you for coming, first of all. You guys will follow the rules, I get it. Not everyone follows the rules, right? You know, we had the conversation, I'm gonna bring it up, we had the conversation about the horseback riding, and the trails, and we, you know, said, well, you know, and so, now, there's different safety elements to those motorized vehicle and a horse, um, but it, it's a little bit of just making sure we're, we're not bending too much to the loudest voice to some degree, because that was a little bit of what happened. I say it's a lot of, lot of voice early, lot of voice later, but, um, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just, it, it is interesting kind of to think the unintended consequences, and also don't make it completely un-user friendly to the people who want to actually use it that way, right?
I think one of the things that made us think differently about it is, we've had on the books, uh, golf cart ordinance for years, and to me, why it's only in the downtown and why we don't have it everywhere else in the town, you know, because the one in downtown is specifically for people who have a disability, and they have a need to be able to get from place to place, and to me, uh, it always drives me nuts when we can't rationally say, well, why does it exist in downtown, but it doesn't exist everywhere else? It's like, that's a, it's a good question. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fair legitimate question.
I think another important component of this ordinance is that by practice, folks have been driving their golf carts to the golf, to the town course for a number of years. Um, we worked very closely with John Kellin on this ordinance, um, and he, you know, actually, I think he, he doesn't have any problem, and actually, you know, likes allowing people to be able to do that, because it just gives that nice interaction between the neighborhoods and the town course.
Well, and a lot of people who moved out to the town course did that because they're golfers.
Right, and they, and they enjoy that opportunity, and so the way that we've drafted this ordinance is to allow for that strictly to occur. So you're, you're starting at your house, you're driving to the town course. If you're deviating off of that, you're not in line with the ordinance and, and the permit that's been provided, which is in response to a lot of the other things that have been going on in the neighborhood, that I think caused this whole discussion to happen to begin with, um, which are people driving golf carts, not for the purpose of getting into the town course.
And John knows who those people are too.
But for a whole lot of other recreational reasons, and really having the spillover effect of causing a lot of concern and consternation throughout the neighborhood. So, that's, I think that's a, this, this is pretty narrowly tailored to allow for specific use of the golf cart, um, in that neighborhood, in those neighborhoods that surround the town course.
Can I add a couple comments? So on needing like all the drivers that are gonna drive the golf cart, don't you think that might be a little over the top, because like, you don't know, like, we have a daughter that lives in Plymouth, she might come over and say, Mom, can I use the cart and go golfing? Oh, wait, you're not on there. I mean, so, I mean, we could, yes, we could sign her up, but why do you need all that information? And to me, it's like a little over the top on the government part of it, where you could just have us registered with it. If someone used our golf cart and they're doing something they're not supposed to be, then yes, give whoever's using our golf cart a ticket, but why would you need all that information is my question. Um, as I don't feel like that's necessary. And then, um, when you guys rewrite this, can we somehow get a copy of that?
Yes, the ordinance gets posted, um, and it was for ten days, I think it's ten days prior to the council taking it.
Because I was just made aware of it on Thursday, so I was just wondering, like, where would I find it?
Well, so here, here would be the plan, is we plan on bringing this back to September thirtieth meeting.
Do you, do you wanna lock yourself, are you confident you can get it back?
I mean, I, I don't see an issue with that, do you?
Because, uh, just remember, you have a meeting right away the next week, so if it's easier to say the October meeting, give yourself a leeway.
Well, then, you know, what I would suggest is, let's make sure we have your email address, and then, uh, we'll email out to you when we have the draft together. You can give it to Nate.
I mean, the last time we tabled something, we tabled it to when we're gonna bring it back.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Tying anybody up, what's that?
Until the end of time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Uh, so, one of you are writing your email address to get it to Nate, okay? So, um, I think we're in agreement here that we will table this and, and work out the finer details, and then we'll, it'll come back at a later meeting to be determined.
Thanks.
That sound okay up here?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, so I would need a motion. No, how do I do that again? I can never remember.
I make a motion to table.
Uh, yeah, that.
Uh.
Ordinance.
Ordinance nine.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash ninety-nine.
Wait, no, that's the, that's the preliminary part. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Um, I, I had moved to table adopt ordinance nine sixty-eight.
It'd be just table ordinance nine sixty-eight, right?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna table, I have a, I have a motion.
Find it on that.
The golf cart thing, we're gonna table that.
You table twenty nineteen ninety-nine.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table ordinance nine sixty-eight, I'll go through it, resolution twenty nineteen dash ninety-nine, amending chapter fourteen of the motor vehicle, uh, related to golf.
And I'll second the tabling.
Uh, I have a second by Councilmember Wang, uh, discussion, and we're gonna bring it back at a date to be determined. We're both good?
Yeah, no, that's.
All right, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, tabled. All right, I think we are through the agenda, we move on to bills. Anyone questions with bills?
Yep.
See, you know what, this, every time we get to this point in the agenda, my computer dies, and so I have to, I have to go right over here.
I always do wonder, why don't we have like little charge stations up here? We could.
Okay.
I've been telling, we need charge stations.
My computer says I only have an hour and twenty-three minutes left, so we gotta, we gotta get through these questions. We should probably go, they only got like four minutes, so they should go fast, so. Um, so I was wondering, on page twelve, there was an item, uh, paid to Scott Congdon for an animal dog bite report, just wondering what happened with that.
I'm getting there.
Yeah.
Where are you?
Uh, page twelve, yep.
What is it?
That's a dog bite report.
Yeah, I had a question on that too.
Just kinda wondering what, what happened.
Scott Congdon.
Yeah, who is that anyway?
I, I'll have to do some look at it, I, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't, it's possible that that's our impound, uh, because we.
No, our impound has a different name, Wellhaven.
What's it?
It has a different name.
Oh, I'll find out. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Um, page sixteen, um, there is an item for GF Jed Licky, um, and it's, the item is former Carver County PW site, I'm wondering what that was.
Isn't that the sewer and water when it went up, or is it the final payment?
So that's the, uh, so we had sewer and water that we had to provide up to the, uh, Shram Brewery, which is a former public works site at, uh, Carver County, so this was the final payment to actually, uh, get that service in.
Before, before you leave page sixteen, Matt, what are we paying these high amounts of propane in the middle of summer for, on Savannah Way? I mean, we're talking two or three, two, three thousand dollars of propane. There's, there's a whole bunch of them there. It's probably four thousand.
On page sixteen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Let's see it on six, oh, sixteen, not on the actual document.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, it's fifteen, fifteen, sorry, sorry.
Fifteen on the document.
I was on the wrong page.
Oh.
It just, it, it just doesn't make any sense.
For Savannah Way.
What with propane, what's that mean?
Well, this is clearly has to do with the construction project that's up there, um, you know, as part of the Savannah Way, but I, I'll have to find out.
Uh, is that lift station? Is there anything, that new lift station? Because that would be on Savannah Way. Is there anything doing with that?
Maybe.
Because I think, I saw a propane tank sitting out there, and I couldn't figure out why there'd be a propane tank there.
I'll have to find out.
That's a lot of propane for summer.
Yeah.
Hate to see the bill in the winter.
Or is it something that, oh, see, I was looking at the dates, because that was.
It was all in August.
That's August, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this is part of the construction activity that's happening up there, but I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'll find that out.
Hank Hill propane. Okay, um, any other, did more questions on that one? Okay. Uh, page eighteen, I have one, um, so there's one for the Hazelton National Golf Course, so this Chaska Golf Experience. What, what, what was that? Because I don't remember.
So Chaska Golf Experience is something that we have on an annual basis, so basically, it's how we pay for all of our, uh, public safety and fire costs for all the major tournaments that are out at the, uh, out at the, the golf course. So basically what it is, is we have a thirty-six people golf event once a year, the day after Labor Day. Uh, we get two, uh, groups, one starts at Town Course, one starts at Hazelton, then they flip, and so we get all the proceeds minus twenty thousand dollars, I think that's what it is, uh, that goes towards, uh, there's a dinner that's provided for there. Uh, we typically make about eighty thousand dollars, uh, a year in that event, and we accumulate that over years to be able to pay for our, uh, future policing and fire expenses.
Oh, my gosh, so that's basically the funding mechanism for that, so it's not public funds?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's actually, we, we like it because it pays for that, well, PGA likes that too, because it pays for it, but we also like it from a town course perspective is, you know, everybody wants to be in that so they can golf Hazelton, but, you know, then they call, golf the town course too, and so we get people exposed to the town course that we normally wouldn't, so.
Very cool.
It's a lot of golf.
Yeah, that's pretty cool though.
And long courses.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are long courses, yeah.
Okay, and then.
I'd be out there still, I'd still be golfing.
You get a box lunch.
And you get a dinner too, you get both the box lunch and a.
You cart the dinner out.
But do I get a shirt?
Can I just drive, can I just drive a car?
Okay, last one here is page twenty-four. Um, so it's, see, there's a, uh, something to Madden Glanter Hanson LLP, it's July legal, but I thought we already have our legal here.
Yeah, so this is our personnel attorney.
Oh, so that's different, so this is.
Yep, so we have, we have basically three different attorney groups. We have these guys for general legal services, we have, uh, EDA, economic development, and then we have personnel.
Okay.
Question on that page, down a little bit, advertising at the American, what do we advertise?
Uh, that actually would be our golf course.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I was curious.
That is all I have.
I have one, um, unpaid document, page forty-seven, so it looks like our new, um, animal control is Wellhaven Pet Health or Countryside. That number just like struck me as being like huge for impounding two dogs, eight fifty-four seventy-three.
Yeah.
I'll check if there's other things on too, because sometimes there's things not included in that description.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, it looks like impound for two dogs, and I guess I don't know what it compares to, because I think, um, whatever, what was the other one? Four paws.
Four paws.
Was like a monthly feed, but that per, if that's per dog, that seems huge. I did it with the city of Chana, and we charged like fifty dollars a dog. So, I don't know, it just, it struck me as being a really big number.
I'll check that out.
Um, I have one on page thirty-one. What's Redbeard LLC, like, what, it's all these banquets, but what is it? It's about women's league, men's league, Thursday.
So that's, uh, that's, uh, Oak nineteen.
Oh, okay.
So we, so we have leagues that, uh, we do like end of the year banquet, and basically then we contract with Oak nineteen to provide the meals.
Oh, okay, all right, this was curious.
Yep.
Yeah, one other one that's weird, uh, Athlaxion, Athlaxson Holdings, it's on page one, thirty-five thousand dollar annual subscription. That must be a financial.
Is it Athlac?
No, I'm assuming it's, I'm assuming it's.
I don't know. I don't recall seeing it before.
Oh, that's part of our active dot net system. So that's our, that's our sub, annual subscription for, uh, the system that, that runs all our reservations and programming for the community center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The athletic in action kind of.
Yeah.
Conjugated, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Took all my.
All right, motion, motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Uh, to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing done. Nate, call roll please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Grau?
Yes.
Mirrorway Show?
Yes. And we do have an EDA, uh, quick meeting afterward, so don't disappear on us, everyone, uh, while we go through other business. Uh, I'll start with, uh, Councilmember Grau. Councilmember Wang.
Okay, so, um, I have a, a number of items, so, it's, because it's been a few weeks, so I wanted to make sure I got these all out here. Um, so, I'm, so the first one is that, um, there's an, I saw the new digital newsletter from Parks and Rec that came out that looks really cool, so that's, you know, it's a good investment to get the marketing out there. I went on a fire department ride along on the twenty-ninth, uh, that was actually really, really very informative, so I'd highly recommend other councilmembers do the same.
The fire department?
Fire department. So I still have yet to do my police ride along.
I didn't know they had the fire department.
Yes. Yep, so.
We're gonna talk about that at the retreat. We want you guys to take ride alongs in like all the departments.
Fine.
All right.
Fine, I don't, I don't.
I was, I was thinking, I was chatting with Kevin about this, that it would be kind of fun to do like a little vignettes of the different, uh, different councilmembers doing ride alongs in different areas to show that, you know, that, you know, that we're involved, and also generates some interest in.
I tried to get Kevin to take a picture of me at the firehouse, open house, and he wouldn't.
Because I think.
I asked him to take a picture of my glitter shoes. That's true.
Because I think it would generate a lot of, some good interest in what's going on within the city, but I think that also more importantly sheds some, sheds some light on a lot of the people who do a lot of the work that kind of goes unseen, so like, you know, the electrical crews, or I don't propose anyone getting on the top of a pole or anything, but, you know, electrical crews, the Parks and Rec and maintenance and things like that, because a lot of people do a lot of good work, and I think it's a good way to kind of put that out there front and center, that hey, there's a lot of people really doing some value, adding value to the city. Um, so one of the things we had kind of talked that, I've talked about with, um, with a local resident who owns a food truck was for the permit cost, and I know that came up, and I, there was another conversation that was also going about this too, um, that one of the things that came up was that, you know, the fees of a hundred dollars for, you know, it's, it was forty dollars before, and even at the old forty dollar rate, one of the concerns was that if they went to like, you know, five or six events, even if you assume that Taste of Chaska River City Days and, um, the farmer's market were paid for by those organizing groups, then they just like stole three or four. and, um, those farmers market were paid for by those organizing groups, then they just like stole three or four events a year that they'd be paying forty dollars each time, or now it's a hundred dollars each time.
What about the businesses that have brick and mortar that pay taxes?
Yep.
I mean, it, it, you know, they're, they're, they're kinda.
Also, clarifying is they don't pay every time that they go.
Yeah, they just pay a hundred dollars.
They pay a hundred dollars for that location. So that's good for the entire year.
For that location.
For the location.
So that means that if they go to Schram, right, then they would pay once a trip, cause Schram's not paying for theirs. But then if they said, okay, I wanna do something at some other event that wasn't one of those other big three events somewhere else in the city, then they have to pay again.
Can I like, can I just give a personal opinion on it?
Well, and real quick though on that, the multiple events, a lot of times what ends up happening is the, the organizers of events have one permit that we issue for the entire event. So like one issuance for a permit for entire River City Days gets in every food truck.
Yep.
So.
So as a, as a business owner, believe it or not, I actually have to pay permit fees to photograph at the Arboretum, photograph at Three Rivers Park, photograph in the Carver County Park System. These are like two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred dollar a year permit, along with some other little checkmarks.
Yep.
I totally understand, but at the same time, in the aspect of things, I also get that it's a hundred dollars as well.
Yeah, it's definitely a CDB, like, it's just a cost of doing business.
It is just a co, and it, and, you know, right or wrong, I, I'm not trying to discount the fact that a hundred dollars is a lot of money. Um, but I also know that fees are, they're, you just have to pay to play, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I, I don't discount that. I mean, I think that the concern was is that if someone's selling like, you know, like a five to seven dollar product, or even selling a ten dollar product, you know, at a hundred dollars, even the, taking out the cost of goods sold, you're spending the first couple hours just paying for your permit. So if you get a little bit of rain in the afternoon, now you could end up losing money on it. I mean, it kind of makes it like, well, why do I wanna bother with this, right? And that's, and I think that especially for, you know, residents here who are trying to start small businesses, food trucks are a way to kind of get off the ground in a lot of cases, right? You know, that's, you know, one of the things we've seen in the past, like, ten years. Um, but I think the concern is that when you're dealing with a, a low margin, low cost goods that are being sold, that's a pretty steep cost that you have to make up on an event where you only have two days to make up whatever that cost is and make a little bit of money on top of that. That's the challenge. So, I mean, I, I don't discount that there's other legitimate concerns from businesses, but, you know, their, their windows of opportunity are pretty small.
It sounds like we all got the same email.
No.
No, I didn't.
I actually got an email from a person with a food truck. I reached out to Nate. I responded, uh, took a little respond, cause I got busy with stuff and responded. And I, I think the other thing, we've totally touched on some of the highlights and I'm not gonna rehash it. But I think the one thing that really sticks out to me, because in particular, this email I received, asked about and maybe accused the city to some word of being a money grab, of changing it and, and, and really emphasizing that, you know, the city has it in place. It's not a revenue generating fee. It is a pay for the staff to process the fee and cover the cost of roads, trails, parks, because they don't pay taxes on that piece. And, and, and I think that's an important understanding when you look at, um, where that money goes. It wasn't raised because of the, hey, we found an ingenious, popular way to, you know, raise more money for the city of Chaska. It, it, it really is, it's popular now, but it is really meant to cover those areas. Um, you know, as you said, Mayor, right away, it's, it's, if you have a brick and mortar building, you're paying taxes and that's what's paying for this. If you're moving your vehicle around, you are wearing the roads down, you're wearing the trails down, the traffic flow, it's not even just you, it's the traffic flow you're driving.
The direct one that really upsets businesses, brick and mortar businesses, is things like farmers markets. Uh, because of farmers market, they're, uh, using public restroom facilities instead of having to have their own. They're using public picnic tables that we buy for them that they don't have to pay for tables. Uh, they're using a parking lot that's a public parking lot. And so the argument you've heard in other cities and, uh, you know, why most cities went to some kind of a permit structure is because there was, uh, brick and mortars really felt like they were an unfair advantage, especially, this started in downtown Minneapolis when food trucks lined themselves up on the street right in front of restaurants and these restaurants look out the window and say, well, they're, they're getting, they're getting by with no overhead costs for providing that service right in front of our restaurant and we're having to pay for these overhead costs. So that's where the whole discussion of cities, uh, looking at permitting these is to try to recognize that, uh, you know, it's both a regulatory side to make sure that you have the right people providing services in your community uh, and that they're doing the right things to make sure the Department of Health is looking at things like that. But it's also a recognition too that, uh, there's a lot of overhead costs that they don't have that, that brick and mortar companies do have.
And I guess, you know, I think, and I spoke to a different, uh, small business owner than you, so I mean, I'm hearing, I think we're hearing the same thing from just different people, cause it's the same net impact.
Yep.
Um, and so my concern was really for that small business owner who's trying to make a go of it, right, you know, and those fees, what seem like they're not much.
Not winning this battle.
Well, I'm just putting it out there, so.
No, I, I, I can understand where you're coming from. Sometimes I get really frustrated in what I do and people call it commercial and they wanna charge me five hundred dollars an hour. And it's like, I'm not photographing a Lexus commercial, you know, so I can understand that the fee structure needs to be appropriate. But I also know that, like you said, brick and mortar costs, overhead costs, that if you're running your business and you're, you're budgeting correctly, that you have to ask yourself if that event is financially worth it for you to pay the permit fee to be at in order for you to break even. You have to price yourself accordingly for it too. So there, that comes into play. I get where you're coming from.
I mean, there's a risk reward with any business, right? I mean, but just, I am putting it out there because I know this is not the first one. This is not the only business in town.
But I will, I will tell you, as a, I, I have a friend that owns a bar, a small business owner.
Yep.
He has an outside bar and he was gonna set it up for serving drinks and, um, basically had his wastewater running in, probably wasn't right, but they would not allow him unless he was hooked up to sewer and water and it had hot and cold running wa, and all he was was serving drinks. And but now how's the food?
This wasn't Chaska, by the way.
No. How's the food truck serve food without hot and cold running water and going into sanitary sewer? So, I mean, there, there are some things that they're able to do that a person can't do that is even seems more illegal. So I, you know, I, it is what it, I don't know. So, that's what I look at. I just, the, the food trucks, I, I think are great in a location like Schram that doesn't have it. And I, I think that there's places for them. And if you set that up and you buy that permit fee for a hundred dollars, it's cheap. Now, if you're there every weekend, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a cheap deal. It's like that way. But if you're stepping in and wanna be here one week and here, well, that's the kind of cost of doing business.
It is, I, I.
You know, I, I, so.
Um, so other items, um, let's see. Downtown Business Alliance meeting, um, I attended this one this, this month. Uh, one of the things that came up was that there's like at least three different people, all got approached by different individuals about, um, requests for, uh, for kind of like a WeWork style office space in Chaska, because apparently it's starting to become more of a popular thing to work remotely. Like a, like a, like a, like one of those, uh, it's kind of like a, like a shared office or a shared officing space. So it's interesting that, you know, we're hearing about that. It's kind of one of those things that's starting to come up more commonly, cause there's people, uh, there's more remote workers, that's something that's become more prevalent.
Didn't they try that to Rick Ford Building and we couldn't get anything to go?
No, it was, it was a different type of setup, but I can tell you that that's one that we have tried to get developers to think more about. Because there are a number of, of people like, uh, accountants or attorneys or things like that, that, you know, they don't need four different receptionists and they don't need four different copy rooms and all that type of stuff. It's, so we're, we've been trying to talk to developers about that, getting them more interested in that concept.
So I just wanted to pass along that, there's definitely some feedback that we're getting from there that's, it's, where they're hearing more, um, requests for that type of service. Um, and then there's like with the, everyone knows about the Highway one sixty-nine, forty-one closure next year. Um, and I think, you know, you had mentioned this one before, um, and I think that there was a quest to, you know, start thinking more actively, proactively about, you know, marketing support to kind of keep those businesses, you know, going during that thirty day closure window when they're expecting, which they're gonna try to work around, like, some sort of inclement weather or some sort of like, you know, like where there might be like a normal closing for like a river flood stage or something like that. But, um, I think there's some general consensus around how can they, how can we support the, the businesses during that time when there's gonna be a closure? Um, I attended the Metro Cities Transportation General Administration Policy Committee, so there's like three different meetings for that. Um, and, um, and we wrapped up the last one, um, and one of the, the key out, there, the two key outcomes for that, like, we're, we're kind of interesting with it. One is that we managed to get verbiage in about, um, providing predictable, sustainable funding for, um, public transportation for suburban communities. So, um, the hope is, is that that verbiage, once it's ratified by the, um, by Metro Cities and, um, is, you know, and is put in front of legislators, will help to drive the, you know, that policy around consistent transportation funding. Because one of the things we have an issue with is that our transportation funding, especially for like Southwest Metro, has been consistently dropping over time. So that funding deficit is, is starting to get to a point where it's starting to eat into overall operating costs and things like that. And it's become a larger issue as time's gone on. Um, the other ish, the other item, which actually I was a little surprised at because it's something I wasn't paying attention to, is that there's been a lot of concern about, um, having jurisdiction at the city level to have non clustering of group homes or things like that. Because there's like in, um, that thing in Burnsville, some other communities, they've had challenges with, um, like, you know, like one house that, you know, have a, some sort of group home or group service. And then another house on that street become available, so then they have that there. And then within like that six or seven homes, then the whole, like, the majority of homes would become like group homes. But then for the couple residents who were left there, then suddenly their, their, um, their property values took a sharp hit, because it was like, great, well, who else is gonna buy my house now, right? If they wanted to move. So, you know, there's concern, even though that, you know, the group homes haven't generally good residents and good, um, neighbors, but, you know, there's a concern about that. So that's some verbiage that's gone into that, um, that policy committee as well. But I thought I'd just mention, because there's some, uh, it's an interesting twist that's been discussed more. Um, it was quite a bit of discussion around that. Um, but overall, the one thing I take away from that is that, you know, for anyone who has a particular interest in an area, especially like, you know, housing or economic development or things like that, I encourage, uh, my fellow colleagues here to, to try to participate, because this is one of those opportunities that, um, has a real tangible impact in terms of it's something that goes in front of our legislatures, both in the House and Senate, um, side of, um, the Minnesota State Legislature.
So are you still able to join a committee or is that done?
It, it's done for this year, but then you'll have next year.
I think League of Minnesota Cities, I think they're, they can do a more ongoing.
Okay, cause the dates just did not line up well with my schedule, so.
Yeah, and I think Metro Cities does it in like, or is it July, August, September? And I think those are the one, they all kind of line up during that period. So, but, you know, and of course, I can only attend one of them, because they're, you know, they're basically like a whole morning for, you know, which is, you know, you end up taking a, a day off, so, or half a day to get there. But I encourage you guys to do that, because I think it's really important, because this is one of the few opportunities that we have as elected officials to really kind of put something forward that helps affect us potentially at a state level that can help us do some good. Um, I also tended a Min dot demo of connected automated vehicles, um, the other day.
Yours work?
Pardon?
Did yours work?
Mine did work, actually. It was pretty cool. Yours didn't?
I was with the, I was with the captain of the State Patrol. We both got out and went, nah, that was a waste.
But it was safe, because it didn't go anywhere.
It was safe, yeah, nothing happened.
It didn't move.
No, it moved. It was like driving in the backseat of a car. It had a screen. It just, yeah, it was really.
It, I mean, it was.
Drove all the way to St. Paul for that.
Were you just riding around in Teslas?
Uh, no, this is a Ford something.
Yeah, it's a Ford Fusion, yeah. But it was a retrofitted Ford Fusion, yeah. Um, but, um, but I think that this is interesting, because there's a, a lot of, um, discussion around this, because it has implications around, um, infrastructure, you know, for things like, you know, like, are there gonna be stop signs or additional, like, stopping goes for, you know, drop offs or pickups of automated vehicles? Or additional lanes or lane markings or what was signage or, or things like that, as well as, um, road laws, licensing, registration, you know, things that affect our community. Uh, but also, you know, like, you know, safety aspects too. But on the flip side of it, there's a number of different things related to, um, you know, potential opportunities in terms of, you know, helping to lower cost of transportation for those who might be economically disadvantaged, to, you know, lower that barrier to, you know, access to jobs and work as well as school and things like that. So there's a lot of ongoing education with this, um, so definitely something to keep an eye out for. I'm gonna try to stay closer to that one, because it's one of those things that it may not be coming really, really fast, but it is coming and it's a matter of time and we need to make sure we're kind of prepared for what that means to us at some point. Um, and the Southwest Transit, um, a number of things, um, since I'm a commissioner in Southwest Transit, um, this budget for the year has stabilized. Um, we're still at an operating loss, so we're digging reserves, um, because the fares that we're currently taking in don't support the ongoing cost. Um, but they're working with service changes right now to, you know, to tweak the service in certain areas to make the most of the funds that are there. Um, so one of the things that, um, we need to, you know, encourage, if you run into any legislators, to encourage them to continue to support, um, like, funding to, um, Southwest Transit and, you know, because one of the things we're not seeing is that a lot of the support from that council that we would expect to be seeing. Um, ridership for state fair is interesting, because it's, you know, if you guys saw the article, the, the odd thing that article didn't cover is the fact that the tend of state fair is to do two things, is to provide both a public service to the community by offering transportation at a reasonable cost and, you know, help people get to the state fair conveniently. But also it's a huge, huge marketing opportunity for us, because we typically see like ever from like a ten to, you know, fifteen percent bump in ridership after state fair, because what happens is people ride the bus. It's like, wow, this is really, really cool. I could take this to work. And so for, we see like this, you know, this bump in transit. So for us, it's a huge investment for us that has been really good. So the matter of fact, we took a five thousand dollar hit in terms of a loss is actually, it's incredible considering that we had a hundred and fifteen thousand people that we, that we transported, which is a, um, a ten point eight percent increase over the previous year, which was a hundred and four thousand people. So, you think about it, even considering that a fare attendance was down overall by five point one percent from the previous year, we still had an increase of ten, you know, almost eleven percent of ridership.
Fare attendance was down in the whole?
Yep, it was down as a whole by five point one percent.
What? Thought we set all the records?
No way.
You sure?
No, they're, they're talking about adding on.
Yeah.
A day.
So, well, that's, well, that's, well, that's what I'm, that's why I got from the, from the site.
I, I think.
I think, I know they lost, Southwest Metro lost money, but.
No, no, I'm saying, but the fare, but so we had, like, our ridership was up ten, ten and a half percent.
Right, but I don't think fare attendance was down. Anyways, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm, because the number I got was like, it was two point oh four six million in twenty eighteen versus one point nine four in twenty nineteen. Those are the numbers I got, but, um, but anyway, so the long and short of it is that overall, you know, like, you know, from a, from a financial perspective, the five thousand is like, kind of like pennies in the bucket, consider, considering the fact that we'll eventually get, I, uh, we expect to get a significant ridership boost from that, uh, state fair experience. Um, one of the other things too is that, um, coming up is Prime MD. So Prime MD is basically a service for people to do medical care. So it's kind of like an Uber for medical care, but specifically for medical stuff. So if you're wheelchair disabled or just need to transport from your home to a, like, to, at this point, it's to Ridge View, is, cause they're like the primary sponsor. The, I, the difference between this and the traditional Southwest Prime is that there's no, um, there's no limitation return time. So for example, if you had an appointment, one of the problems that a lot of people, you know, experiences that they will typically, um, they're concerned that, oh my gosh, I have to cut my appointment short, because I might not be able to get a ride back home. So they've seen a lot of, you know, people who are elderly or, um, maybe have some, um, some mobility challenges or transportation challenges, just leave early and miss their appointments, because they're afraid they won't be able to get a ride home. So this basically provides a guaranteed ride home. No matter what time your appointment ends, you will guaranteed to get a, to get your ride home. It's a ten dollar flat fee, so that way it's not gonna be something that's gonna like really, you know, hit hard. And it's partially subsidized by Ridge View. And the goal is that, you know, once we get this off the ground in October, um, that, to expand this to St. Francis, Park Nicolet and Fairview. So then, you know, be able to get people to and from those medical destinations. So, um, thank you to Ridge View for, you know, for being the first to, you know, be part of this program. But I think it's a great program. It'll help people who need medical care. Um, and also, um, they also received a MCI in the Low Flora Bus, which allows faster, easier loading of wheelchair passengers. And that was, um, this one, that's just part of the, the, the normal bus replacement. That's one of the first in the country that will effectively drop the load time of a wheelchair passenger from ten minutes down to two, three minutes. Um, and also Southwest Transit also received a few awards too, which were for, uh, Great Employer of Carver County, uh, Government Technology Association Award for Technology Innovation Award to Prime, and the TSA Regional Safety and Security Award. So, some good work that those guys are doing out there.
Awesome.
Yes, so sorry, a lot of stuff, but we hadn't, hadn't been a few weeks, so.
Clark again, last year's attendance topped two million for the first time. This year, I'm nineteen.
I got the attendance broke records. It broke records like on five of the days, so anyways.
All right. You're up.
Uh, okay, um, yeah, it's been a. Uh, okay, um, yeah, it's been a while, but attended the fireman's house, it was very performative and really well done. Even though the weather wasn't ideal, I think the attendance was great, and everybody was having a great time, so. I did not write my notes down, so I'm, I know, I just know that the Southwest Metro Manufacturing Forum is coming up on Friday, October fourth, although we do have a meeting before then, that's kind of what I have coming up on my calendar. And, um, there was something else, but I, I don't think it was anything significant in importance. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, you know, yeah, otherwise.
Mike took some of your spots, so you're okay.
May, maybe, so, I don't know, but yeah, otherwise, things are going great, so.
Ms. Hatfield?
I was just gonna say that the open house for the fire department was amazing. I had so much fun. Sometimes you're like, I'm gonna go to this event, and then I got there.
Really down in attendance because of the rain.
Well, because of the rain, but I had a blast. I felt like I was five again. I was like, what? You know, I had, I seriously did have a lot of fun.
You didn't have to wait nine so long for anything, did you?
That's true. I had like a thousand hot dogs.
Did you go on a ride?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah, my, my son, I got to sit in the front, so, awesome.
I left that for the children.
I know what I was gonna say.
So the thing I didn't get with that, so we're all spraying the hose down to, to spray the garbage can, and there's a nozzle on there. And so you think, well, if there's a nozzle, you're gonna grab it and you're gonna spray it down, and they told us, what did they tell us? That you're not a true fire, fireman if you grab the nozzle.
You don't, yeah, you hold it.
You hold it against your side.
You hold the hose by your.
And I'm like, well, why would they put the nozzle on there then?
Probably can't have to be there.
Yeah. I thought you'd know as a fireman.
Well, what, what'd he say?
There's like a nozzle in the end of the hose.
Yeah?
There's a handle on it.
They're saying you shouldn't hold it, that you should play it against your body.
Instead of pulling it by like the.
Instead of holding it by the nozzle. I'm like, well, why did they make the nozzle then?
I don't know. Just trying to think, uh, yeah, we held it.
That was.
You haven't turned it on or not.
Yeah.
A revening story.
All right, get on with yours.
And then, so that was great, and then the downtown block party, I don't think we have another meeting before this, is September twenty eighth, and that's really nice to go downtown. The businesses will be out on Second Street, Guardian Angels always does a great job of stuff for kids, and then the Say Hey Five K will be there. And Shram is holding Oktoberfest up at the brewery, so I think it's gonna be like a really fun fall kickoff weekend, just to kick off fall festivities. So, I am really bummed I'll be missing it. Unfortunately, my sister is getting married, I have to go to that, but. But I, I'm bummed I'm missing this, so there's that.
You could always, you know.
I know, I could just skip it.
Your sister's right.
And then I just have a question, if we know anything about why there's a for sale sign in front of KFC?
The answer is no.
That's, that was my answer, I thought I missed that.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, we're just as baffled, and if you look at the price that they're asking for it.
It's a steep price.
Yeah, if they get that price, I think if I were them, I'd sell it too, so.
Maybe they found gold or something under it.
Yeah.
But I just thought I'd ask, since it was a popular topic.
No, I mean, we're, we're very baffled by it as well.
I won't even go there. I think that's all I had.
All right. Nate, anything?
No.
Luke? Matt?
Retreat, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, you have that thing?
Yeah, that thing.
Are we gonna get more instructions, like, where to go?
Yep, so I got an agenda that I'm gonna be getting out tomorrow, so.
I'm all about like, I don't like going places where I don't know what's happening, I get a lot of anxiety.
All right, we'll make sure you know where you're going.
Oakridge.
I know that, but I have to know where I'm going once I'm in there, and like, if I'm gonna know anyone.
Silent director.
We'll make sure you know where you're going. And I just want to mention that Noel just got appointed by the National GFOA to their debt service committee, which, I mean, this is, you know, across the entire country, and, and this is one that, you know, impacts us pretty directly on, you know, one of the things, the mayor probably remember this, because this was a couple of years ago, but our ability from the IRS to do advanced refundings of, of debt service was taken away a couple of years ago, and we, we sold a lot of, we refinanced a lot of debt right before the, the ability was taken away to do that, because it's a cost savings to taxpayers. So, I mean, it's those types of things that can be impactful in this committee at a national level, which have direct impacts on, on our operations on a day to day basis. So, pretty excited for his opportunity to be able to do that. So, that's all I have.
Did he even make it the whole time?
No, I know.
You said you had something you remembered?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I just had the council retreat. The, the block party in GA, we already covered that, Oktoberfest. The only other thing, a while back, we had the Just Family Inn about their benefit that they do for the ministries in Africa. That ride is up in September twenty second, which is a Sunday, so a week from, week from the Sunday. So that is coming up. I said I would mention that as that got close. The only other thing we do have, for anybody that still would be watching at this late, we have a meeting next Monday, which is a fifth Monday.
No, we don't. It's two Mondays from now.
Oh, yeah, I mean, two Mondays, yes, yes, sorry. The fifth Monday, sorry.
Yeah.
This is the third.
Yeah.
I was thinking of the next meet. Now we have a meeting right away this, the seventh, although the biweekly says it's the sixth.
Yeah, you got it wrong on the second, but.
Yeah, so I wanted to clarify that for anybody on the biweekly that might be looking at that, or we get that corrected.
Matt will be here on the sixth, but most of us can come on the sixth.
We come at five forty-five, and we'll be here to have a conversation with you about it. And then we do have, I believe, five forty-fives before every meeting, correct? So, all right, that's all I have. Again, we have a quick EDA meeting right after this, so unless anyone has anything, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grau. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign.